Good morning. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM, Tuesday, May third, 2022 meeting. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation from Pastor Carter, Henry County Sheriff's Office, and Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, our Father, we come now to say thank you. God, we thank you for this moment that we share together. Now, God, we ask your blessings be upon our leaders. God, continue to guide them and direct them in the path in which you know is right. God bless their families as they continue to serve unselfishly. God guide our community to be supportive of the actions that support humanity. God allow us to serve on this day with conviction, realizing that you are the Creator and Maker of all. God do for us what we cannot do for ourselves. And then, God, those that reside in Henry County, bless them now, God, in a way that only you can. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance.
Like to call our meeting to order. I'm going to add a proclamation recognizing the National Small Business Week. Presenter will be Nicholas Ivy from our Communications Department.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. I have a proclamation for you for National Small Business Week, and it reads, whereas National Small Business Week celebrates small business owners around the country, recognizing their outstanding service, innovation, and development; and whereas small businesses account for half of America's workforce, and more new jobs come from small businesses than any other source; and whereas the 2022 NSBW theme, Building a Better America Through Entrepreneurship, highlights the resilience, ingenuity, and creativity of America's 32.5 million small businesses; and whereas during National Small Business Week, we celebrate our county's small businesses and their enormous contributions to daily life and prosperity; and whereas Henry County small businesses have shaped and embodied a thriving entrepreneurial spirit, which drives our local economy forward; and whereas the U.S. Small Business Administration, Georgia District Office announces 2022 Georgia Award winners on April 29, 2022; and whereas retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel Michael Randall was recognized as the 2022 Veteran Small Business Champion of the Year for the state of Georgia; and whereas retired Lieutenant Colonel Michael Randall is the President and CEO of Safeguard Security Solutions LLC in Stockbridge, Henry County, Georgia; and whereas, in addition to operating a small business, retired Lieutenant Colonel Randall founded the Share the Dream Foundation, through which he helped six veterans start their own businesses and nonprofit organizations in 2021. Now therefore be resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners do hereby join the national celebration by proclaiming May 1 through 7, 2022, as National Small Business Week, and encourages everyone to shop local and small. Small businesses are constantly reinvesting in the local community by donating to school programs and providing aid and assistance to local organizations. When our small businesses thrive, our communities thrive. Thank you. If some of the representatives, Mr. Randall, are here, we'd like to get a picture of you with the board members.
So we're going to change the order of the agenda a little bit. We're going to go ahead and move to the consent items. If I can have the county manager come forward and read those consent items.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, May 3, nine AM. Under Capital Projects, we have a resolution awarding a contract for architectural design services for a satellite government office, tax and tag office, in Locust Grove to Lyman Davis Dooley, Inc., in the amount of $310,400, utilizing capital improvement plan funds. The facility is located in District One. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding bid number 22-37 to Terra South Land Care LLC for groundskeeping, mowing, and landscaping services to specified Henry County facilities' locations, as indicated in the proposal Exhibit One, in the amount of $320,264 annually. Funding will be available using the facility maintenance budget. Under the Fire Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the acceptance of the funds from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $50,000. Under SPOSS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding bid number 22-47 for JP Mosley Disc Golf Course Improvements to JR Bowman Construction Company in the amount of $293,206, utilizing SPOSS funds, District Four. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the construction of Reeves Road Drainage Pipe Replacement and Improvement to Backbone Infrastructure LLC from Sugar Hill, Georgia, in the amount of $146,601,04. The property is located in District Four. And then, under Transportation, we have a resolution approving the bid award for Engineering Design Services for Intersection Improvements of Industrial Boulevard at Henry Parkway to Falcon Design Consultants LLC in the amount of up to $109,920. And again, this project is located in District One. This ends the consent agenda.
If I'd like to call for a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're going to move back to the presentations. Recognition of County Employee Retirement, Harri Kupka, our HR Director.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Distinguished Board Members. I come before you today to honor two individuals who gave their undying commitment to Henry County. Collectively, they have 44 years of experience, and those individuals are: Mr. Gregory Malcolm, 28 years of service with the Henry County Fire Department; Ms. Jerry Yoder, 16 years of service with Henry County Animal Control. We want to thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kupka. Next presentation, Connecting Henry Update, Henry County Nonprofit Assistance Program and CDBG Funds. Ms. Barbara Coleman.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and give a presentation on Connecting Henry. I'm here to represent the organization as the Executive Director. My name is Barbara Coleman. Am I controlling this? As you can see, the mission of Connecting Henry is to identify and connect resources within the community. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Is to identify and connect existing resources that's within the community. We are here to collaborate. We don't believe in reinventing the wheel. This is all for the protection of serving children and families within Henry County. Apologize. As you know, one of the things that we do is to help families to stay in our home. That is our primary purpose, to make sure they have a place that they can lay their heads at night, have a place to cook their meals. In Henry County, there are no places at all. We do not have an accurate count for the homeless within Henry. We do know that they exist. There's a place for battered women. There's a place for foster care children, but there is no infrastructure whatsoever to support families in this community that are homeless, and there are no, really, no affordable housing within Henry County. To give you a recap on what Connecting Henry has done with the funds provided by the Henry County nonprofit, this, we have two sets of numbers that I will identify. One, from the beginning of the pandemic, back in March of 2021, March of 2020, through March 31 of 2022 of this year. We've already spent with Henry County nonprofit funds over $726,000 just on rent and mortgage, and an additional $70,000 on utilities. You can see by district, we have covered every district within Henry County, including the unincorporated. Every district has been represented, and you can see by the numbers which district has the highest numbers. But if you look overall, they're all represented. And then, if you look, it would say from 2020, when the pandemic began, through the March of this year, and then it shows just from the fiscal year. Actually, those, those slides, one of the slides is not correct. It would have shown from July of this past year to present, which represents this year. But the numbers are pretty much the same. Every commissioned district has been represented. We also receive another grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant. This is through Department of Community Affairs for rapid rehousing and emergency shelter. And as you can see, the biggest amount, again, is for housing. We've already put so many people in a hotel representing $76,000, and that's since the pandemic began. And you can see the other numbers, how much we've paid for deposits for utilities, gas, water, and electric. And if you look at those numbers, again, from July of this past year up until the present, March of this year, we've also spent $86,000, and this is just helping with the emergency solution grants for security deposits, paying the first month's rent. Subsequently, we could pay additional months of rent to help those families. We also received the CDBG grant. You can again see here, it's represented throughout the county. We cover all of the county and touch everyone within the community by the funds that we've received. And if you look at just from July, again, of last year to March of this year, we've spent 400, over $427,000 on rent and mortgage. And in the parentheses, over $53,000 of that is for mortgage. We know that there are other organizations that do the same thing. Some of them are represented here. We need to continue to support to be able to do what we do. ERAP is great. ERAP is helping people, but we still need assistance to help those that are mortgage holders, because there's no assistance available if we cannot continue to receive the funding. And if you look from the beginning of the pandemic, again, through March of this year, we've spent over $1 million helping folks to stay in their home with rent and with mortgage, and you can see, again, $74,000 gone towards mortgage holders. I also want to point out, with the numbers of helping these families, the majority of the people that we assist are families. They unfortunately are single women with children, single black women with children. And so, it is critical that we continue to help families within the community. To put it all in perspective, before the pandemic hit in fiscal year 1819, total, we only spent $19,366. We thank you for your support, because we can't do what we do without the funding. We are 100% grants and donations funded. And as you can see, spending almost $2 million since the pandemic in comparison to what we did before the pandemic. We have one additional grant that we received through CDBG, and those funds were used for the Inspire Employment Training. Two quick testimonies of two people that had gone through that program. One of them is a Henry County Parks and Recs employee. We put him through our training. He ended up getting an internship with Henry County Parks and Rec. He is now an employee. He's been there over a year and a half. We have another employee that came through. She had been recently incarcerated, spent three years in prison. She came through our employment training class. The only job that she could get was at IHOP. This was back in 2013 or 14. She's now a manager at IHOP. She's in her own home. She's a felon. But through our employment training program, we've been able to assist that individual and so many others. And it, again, is through the funding of CDBG, Henry County nonprofit, the ESG grants. We cannot thank you enough. I stand here not only as a representative of Connecting Henry, but of all the other nonprofits that are here in the community doing the good work to help folks to stay in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Does any board members have any questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas.
I just want to really thank you for your report. It's an excellent report, and it's good to see that these funds are being disseminated out to help the community. I also would like to ask, if you could, to send us a copy of this report, so we can share it with our constituents to let them know that your services are here in the community and that you indeed are working. I would like to echo these wonderful numbers that you put before us, and look forward to supporting you going forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Visit Henry, Georgia Update. Ms. Lori Lucker, Director of Henry County Tourism.
Hi, I am Laura Lucker, and the Director of Tourism for Visit Henry, which is a destination marketing organization. We are the destination marketing organization for Henry County. And as a destination marketing organization, our job is to promote Henry County to tourists, and that's very appropriate this week, because in addition to apparently being Small Business Week, it's also National Travel and Tourism Week. So tourism has a huge impact on not just the Henry County economy, but also the U.S. and Georgia economy. And so, we are here in part to do a report, but also to celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week. So our goal is to bring people into Henry County to recognize all of the wonderful assets that Henry County has, and to really build that community and to create economic development. And we are required to do this by state law through the promotion of tourism conventions and trade shows. That is what we are, exist to do. And the, our, our charge from the Hotel Motel Tax Law from the Department of Community Affairs is to conduct, or we would have to do it through the planning, conducting, or participating in programs of information and publicity that is designed to attract advertised, advertised tourism's, conventions, and trade shows. So in that, again, you see advertised publicity, information. It is not, we're not a infrastructure and a building organization. We are a promotion organization. And as such, we are required to be a 501(c)(6) nonprofit. That is set up specifically to promote tourism. We are under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce, but we do have a separate Board of Directors, separate financials, and we are also industry-specific and geographically-specific. So we represent Stockbridge, Hampton, Locust Grove, and the unincorporated areas of Henry County. And so, if you are a hotel, restaurant, attraction, event facility, that kind of tourism business, then you are automatically under the purvey of the Visit Henry County Tourism Promotion. And we are also 100% funded through the Hotel Motel Tax, which I'll talk about in just a second. So as I mentioned, we do work with and promote tourism businesses that include anybody that basically makes tourism stays possible. And we promote these destinations to our leisure visitors, maybe people that are passing through, but also to corporate meeting planners, day trippers, production companies, brides who want to have a wedding here. But what we really don't do is, we don't promote to residents. That's not our primary purpose. We certainly hope that the things that we do benefit our residents and that they can use our resources, but our goal is to get new money into the community, heads in our, heads in beds, to spend money at our restaurants and our attractions and our, in our hotels. And this is done, as I mentioned, through the Hotel Motel Tax. And what this looks like is that someone will come into our hotel, and they will pay the room rate, the occupancy tax, the sales tax, as well as the state and local sales tax. And then, in Georgia, there is a $5 transportation fee. The hotel collects all of that Hotel Motel Tax every month, and then they remit it to the organization, the county or the city in which they are located. And then, depending upon the tax rate that they are collecting under, whether it's 5% or 8%, in Henry County, the Board of Commissioners collects it 5%. So for the purposes of this, 5% of that taxes then goes to the Board of Commissioners, and they then have to, by law, present 40% of that to a designated nonprofit. So that is the Convention of Visitors Bureau. And that goes to us in order to promote conventions, tourism's, trade shows, and it can only be used by us for, for tourism promotion. It also includes short-term rentals. As of July of 2021, short-term rentals, Airbnbs, VRBOs, are required to collect this, just like hotels, and they're under the same requirements. And here is just kind of a breakdown of how that funding is, is collected and distributed. Again, county collects under 5%, so 60% stays with the county and can be used for any legal government purpose, whereas 40% can only be used for tourism promotion. It is considered restricted. And here is just an example of 8%. I won't go into that, since that's not how y'all collect, but there is information about it if you have questions. We do represent, I said, four entities. You can see how that breaks down. There is 30 hotels and a bed and breakfast in Henry County. And then additionally, now, we're starting to see that revenue come in from our short-term rentals. The Board of Commissioners actually represents 12 hotels out of that mix. So what do we do with that funding, and how do we promote Henry County? This is kind of some of the breakdown of what we did last year. One of our most successful programs was our new visitors guide. This is actually our 2022 guide that you're seeing, but we did have our 2020 guide that we launched and rolled out right before the pandemic set in, but we did distribute it throughout 2021, and we had a new program at our state welcome centers. And it was so successful, we were able to distribute almost 40,000 guides at the welcome centers, as well as at the RACE and at other distribution centers. In fact, though, the Ringgold Visitor Center, which is at the top end, right before you would come out of, I guess, Chattanooga, they said that our visitors guide was the second-most picked-up piece at their welcome center after their state travel guide. So we've actually expanded our distribution program at these welcome centers going into this year and ordered additional guides. And so, there's just some write-ups. You can see about how successful it is and what the welcome centers are saying about the program. We also do some of your more traditional advertising. We have billboards. Last year, we had three digital billboards. We were able to actually get a grant from the state to add two additional billboards. So you can see some examples. The Fall Billboard is what ran September through December with that state grant, and is part of a rotating billboard design. And then, we have three additional, excuse me, four additional boards that we did purchase this year, rented this year. And so, our Cotton Fields one rolls in with those ads as well. And so, we do a variety of different print and digital ads. Here are some examples of some print and digital here, and then additional print and digital ads that we have that are in various different types of publications and websites. And we also do video advertising that is specific to each of our different entities. These are pieces that have been created that really highlight the different activities in each city. And these video ads can be anything from come up during your YouTube viewing or Hulu, or maybe that they just start playing in the middle of one of your content pieces if you're reading a long-form content. And they have been very, very successful. They also all link through to our website. We have digital display ads as well. These are ads that would come up if you're doing search or if you're doing other types of, of activities online. And again, they also link through, and they're specific to the city. And as I mentioned, they go through to our website, and our website has designated pages for each of our different entities, along with itineraries and things to do for those destinations, and they have been very well-received. We also do a lot of PR and media. We bring in press every year. Last year, we brought in four writers, and the piece that you'll see here was from Girl Camper Magazine, and actually was as a result of that press. But all in all, based on existing relationships and other pitches and things, we had $1.65 million worth of earned media last year. And this means that if we'd had to go out and buy that media, it would have cost us that much to place ads in all those publications. And here's just some examples, some additional earned media that we had got earlier this year, actually. We also know that it's really important that we don't just market, but we also really develop our partners. And so, we do a lot of different things to work with our partners to make sure that they have resources and things that they need, and that they're recognized. So we do a customer service award to make sure that our partners know that we appreciate what they do, but we also host mixers so that they get to know each other and can cross-promote each other, and that they have access to tourism grants as well. We launched in 2021 also a customer service training video, and this is a free online video. And then, we also have a diversity, equity, and inclusion training video. It is a five-part series. You see the examples, or the examples, the courses on the right, and it was taught by five different industry experts on each of those different subject matters. And again, all these panels are free and online and available to our tourism partners. And we also have a social media presence, obviously. We promote all the different activities, things to do, and push out the content and the social that we get from our writers, as well as other types of great media assets, and we have a very active and engaged following. And then, last year, we also were excited to put out some new initiatives that are just fun. You never know exactly what people are going to cling on to and what people need. And so, in 2021, we also launched on these new coloring sheets that we had designed by a local artist, and we were able to give away about 13,000 of these at state welcome centers, at the RACE, and our local hotels and attractions as well. And those just were very, 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 very popular. And then, one of the most things that I'm excited about was we have this Bushy Tail Art Trail, and it is actually tiny squirrel-sized picnic tables that are decorated by local artists. And I'm, the community of artists have really just gotten behind this and have made it so successful. And while it looks just fun, it actually has a really, really amazing ability to create a place and give Henry County a real sense of place, and has really given a conversation for artists to have a place to kind of show off their work and to drive people. And the site has been getting such good feedback, and the Artist Consortium that's putting this together has just done a fantastic job. So we have 20 right now, and hopefully, we'll have about 30 before the end of the year, and you can see them all over Henry County. So with that, is there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Does the board have any questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas.
Again, thank you so much for your presentation. I want to know if you could also prepare for us some type of financial review? I want to know if you could also prepare for us some type of financial review from your area, uh, from 2021, a year-to-date, so we can see how the funds are actually being used to do what you do for the county.
Yes, I have that and, um, I will consent it to you when I get back to the office.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we'll have a COVID update, COVID-19 update from, um, our Fire Chief, Chief Jonathan Burnett, and our EM, our, uh, Emergency Management Director, Kevin Johnson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to give you a quick COVID update as it relates to Henry County and what's going on. So these numbers are of, uh, as of yesterday afternoon. Uh, some of the information we have received was from, uh, the Piedmont Henry Hospital along with, uh, DPH. Uh, there was one positive case reported in April, um, and Ms. Holly LaFontaine, uh, gives that information. She keeps up with the county staff. Uh, then we reported one COVID-19 case in April. Uh, there was actually six total positive patients that were at Piedmont Henry Hospital. That information was updated, uh, as of this morning. And one of the things that we're doing currently, uh, that we have working is, uh, the coordinating of the, the healthcare intervention team or task force, uh, that we've mentioned before. What that looks like is that looks like a collaborative effort between, uh, the Fire Department, DPH, uh, to go out into the, the designated areas that DPH has provided to us, which are the low-vaccinated areas. One of the things that we're going to need help with this is from the actual commissioners, uh, along with the city. We're wanting to do our first one, uh, in the area of McDonough. So we have a meeting, uh, later on this week, actually scheduled with a couple of commissioners, uh, and the mayor of McDonough to, to put together that plan to actually implement it, uh, in the city. What we're needing from the commissioners and the mayor, uh, of McDonough is basically the, the face of this, uh, push. We need, uh, the, the elected officials out there helping us push this message that, uh, we need these vaccines in these areas. There are a couple of areas that are identified in the county as the low-vaccinated areas, uh, with McDonough being one, so we want to start with there, uh, and then move forward. We continue to push our information on the social media, uh, along with Henry TV and our faith-based organizations as well. Keep moving on. Get into Kevin.
Good morning. We're going to touch on the, uh, testing and vaccine numbers really quick. Uh, Red Hawk Testing Site has shifted their hours. Uh, due to a decrease in demand, they have changed to Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They're averaging around 14 tests a day at this point. And we have seen a slight increase in our positivity rate. Uh, two weeks ago, we were right at 3%. Right now, we're sitting at 5.9% positivity rate. On the vaccine front, we are slowly moving in the right direction. Uh, Department of Public Health administered 90 vaccines in the month of April. Henry County is still 8% lower than the state fully vaccination rate. Uh, but we are strategically working on that, like Chief mentioned, with our healthcare intervention teams. This chart shows the age range of those that are vaccinated. You can see that our, our largest gap are those that are under the age of 35. Uh, so we're prioritizing that group and, uh, trying to get as many folks vaccinated as we can. One thing that we're excited about is the delivery of a COVID-19 testing machine. This is a 24/7 operation where citizens can come and receive a COVID-19 test. The specimen is collected twice a day by a carrier, taken to a lab, and those results are directly given to the citizen via phone call. Uh, we're expecting delivery this month, should be in the next couple of weeks. They're working through some technical issues with the machine, uh, but we're excited to have it. And we'll let all of you know as soon as that arrives. Our team's going to continue to push information out. We're going to monitor the situation overseas. We are tracking the Omicron BA2 variant, which is showing to be highly transmitted, transmittable, but has lower, uh, symptoms, severity of the symptoms, which is leading to lower hospitalizations and deaths. Uh, so we're going to keep pushing that information and then continue to send you guys updates as we get them.
Great, thank you so much. Where is the machine going to be placed?
110 South Zackin Parkway. That's our police and fire headquarters.
Okay.
Yes, and we're, so that's the first phase. Uh, if that goes well, then we'll have two more provided, one for the north end and south end of the county.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, any questions from any commissioners, any comments? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we'll have Aquatic Center update, uh, from our Cluster Lead, Jonathan Pan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, um, Board of Commissioners and, uh, Henry County residents. Um, today I have a very brief update, but an update. We did meet with the, um, design team that was approved during the same time the location was approved, on April 19th. Um, we were introduced to their team. They were introduced to us and our team, which consisted of Ron Bokholtur, um, Lam Planchon, Hutch Purvis, and myself. Um, had a great conversation about possible orientation of the Aquatic Center on the site. Right now, what they're doing is evaluating the site and doing boring testings. So they're scheduling the boring testing so that we'll know exactly where we can put it on that site. Um, and then once they have that, we can move forward with the design process. So that's where we are. Um, we look to have that very soon. We did discuss a very, very aggressive timeline. Um, and so we're looking to hopefully stay as close as possible to that timeline.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Uh, next we'll have, uh, some instructions on how to find your commission district by our county clerk, Stephanie Braun.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and residents. Um, since the redistricting, um, has gone through, we have had, whoops, sorry about that. We have had quite a few residents calling in, trying to figure out what district they're in now and what district they will change to with the redistricting lines, if they've changed at all. So we have the maps on the election site, but we also have our Henry County Board of Assessors page, which has a la, which has layers that you can go through to find where your district is now and find where it will be for voting purposes. So this is on the main page of our website, co.henry.g a.us or henrycountyga.gov. And across the top is the pull-down menus. And the last one is how do I? And the first one listed will be find your commission district. And it will take you to our Henry County Tax Assessor site. And you will put search records, or I'm sorry, yes, search records. And then it will take you to the next screen where you can search by owner name, parcel number, location address, or subdivision. Um, probably the easiest way is to put your location address in. It will pull up the first page of our Q public site, which will have a lot of information on the property. I've got this building, 140 Henry Parkway, pulled up. At the very top left, I know it's hard to read, it will say layers. And then you will have to go down to view map. And then it will put up a map of your property and outline it. And to the left there, you will see there are two choices. One is choose your commissioner districts expiring 12/31/22, and then the new commissioner districts for the 2022 elections. So here's the one for commissioner districts as they are now. And as you, it's hard to read, but it's District 1. And then when you hit the next button, that shows you that it's moved to District 5, I believe. And this will be on the main page of our website. Like I say, it will also be on our elections page. And residents obviously are more than welcome to call in and we will guide them through and, and help them find the answer. But if they would like to get on themselves, it's very easy to find and these instructions are posted. Questions? Thank you.
There any questions? Also, um, I would just like to say that, um, for those that are tech-savvy, you can download the app G A S O S and put in your information to see if you're registered to vote and to check your polling location. And that would be just as easy as well to see what district you're in if, uh, your district has changed. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we're going to move to the regular agenda items. Department of Transportation, this is a public hearing. We have David Simmons to come up. Request to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Frog Road right-of-way.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board members. Uh, as Chair said, this is a public hearing, request to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Frog Road right-of-way. Wrong way, as I always do. So the area in question is an existing portion of Frog Road right-of-way is shown on the attached map. It'll come up on a screen here, next screen or two. And more particularly shown on attached flat and legal description in the amount of 25,993 square feet, which equates to 0.597 acres. The abandonment and declaration of surplus is necessary to complete a property transaction as described and authorized in previously-approved Resolution 16342. The, and the area to be abandoned and declared surplus has ceased to be used by the public. And we've advertised in the Henry Herald on the 23rd and 27th of April. And, uh, we've notified the adjoining property owner, which is, uh, also the same property owner that, uh, 16342 is associated with as far as basically like a land swap. What you see shaded in gray there is the old roadbed and old right-of-way of existing Frog Road that we're looking to abandon immediately. To its south is the current location of Frog Road alignment. So that section of the road is no longer driven on. And there it is, kind of on a tax map, uh, with aerial just showing you, kind of shaded in blue is where the old roadbed is and, and where the road is now. And as part of, um, by the way, the resolution heading up at the top is 16342 as a typo on my part. So that's, should be Resolution 16-342. Remnant parcel is the parcel between the existing roadway right-of-way that we're looking to abandon, or the old roadway right-of-way we're looking to abandon, and the current roadway. Basically, those would be combined as, uh, as approved back in 2016. But we still need to do the, the abandonment of the road. And I'll take any questions.
Questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak will have three minutes each. If anyone wishing to come to speak reference to this matter. Okay, um, no questions from the board? I'd like to call for a motion. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing speed bumps to be installed in Brook Hollow subdivision, District 4.
All right, uh, yes, as, as Chair said, uh, this is about speed hump installation within Brook Hollow subdivision. And per our current subdivision, our speed hump ordinance, the required number of residents of Brook Hollow subdivision signed a petition in accordance, uh, in accordance with, uh, our speed hump ordinance to be placed in the subdivision. And staff in Henry County DOT verified the requirements the ordinance was met. And the approximate location of each proposed speed hump has been marked on a drawing included, which it'll be a subsequent slide. And, uh, you know, and I'll say, uh, our ordinance basically requires 51% of owners to be in favor. So it's, uh, it's one vote per property. So whether one person's on the deed or 10, I need the one or the 10 all to sign it in order to get a yes. So, um, and we did a speed study and, uh, we did the locations out there. We did a speed study in two locations, in the 85th percentile speed. And one was, uh, the fastest was 37 miles an hour and the other's 38 miles an hour. And our ordinance requires it be 11 over the posted, which is 25. So it exceeds the minimum 36 miles an hour. and as I mentioned, we went out, or I went out on site and met with the owners about, uh, locations of speed tables. And we call them speed humps just because that's its most normal, uh, thing you call it. But it's really more of a speed table from beginning to end is 22 feet. But it's basically a flat table instead of a, a severe bump. And there's the neighborhood with, uh, approximate locations of, uh, where we were spotting speed humps, speed tables out there. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there is, uh, there are 11 currently proposed, um, so I'll take any questions.
So was a, did a request come in to have this done?
Yes, yes, from the neighborhood. And then first thing we did was a speed study because I didn't want them doing a petition for something that wasn't going to at least jump the first hurdle. So we did the speed study and it exceeded, uh, 36 miles an hour for the 85th percentile, which is basically your 15% fastest drivers and up are driving 37, 38 miles an hour in these two locations in one direction. So, but yeah, the, the initial request, we did the study, and then we said, okay, you can start your petition now.
Is this a residential area with a lot of children?
Um, it's, it's, I think it's 118 lots in the neighborhood. I'm sure there are some children.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yes, uh-huh, yes.
It is a very, um, it's a beautiful community. It does have a lot of children in the neighborhood. There are hills that are just beautiful to look at. But we have speeders taking advantage of those hills and just zooming up and down like crazy. Uh, the neighborhood definitely wanted to have these speed bumps. And I've been working with them to get the proper paperwork in place and definitely support the efforts of getting them there.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, did you have a question?
I had a comment. I don't have a question.
Okay.
Typically, when we put speed humps in subdivisions, we, I, I tell the people that are in District 1, when you put these in, it, it affects the response of emergency vehicles when they're coming through. So they just have to realize that when you're getting fire trucks, ambulances, police cars coming through, it does affect the response coming through the subdivision, so.
Yes, sir, and I've, I've heard that previously from, um, uh, when Brad Johnson was here, you know, but, and I'll say the tables, and maybe I drive differently than most people. My car's 2012, you know, um, but I, uh, to me, you can go over and run in 15, 15 miles an hour, even 20 probably if it's more like me, so, um. But they're not typically the, they're not the jolt, almost parking block that, type things that you see in some places. But yes, I'm sure any large vehicle will need to slow down to go over it.
Great, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Um, Stephanie, did we have anyone sign up to speak?
Well, it's, this one is not a public hearing. We do have people to speak during public comment. If you want to move them up there, I'll speaking about the speed humps.
Okay, I'm sorry, say that again?
It's not a public hearing, but we do have people signed up for public comment that wish to speak on the speed humps. So you can move them up or do it during public comment.
You want to hear?
I do have some residents here that like to speak on this issue. And if you would let them come forward, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so if we, uh, have anyone here, um, that would like to come up and?
Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Thomas?
We'll need to make a motion to let the board vote to open it up for public comment.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to place a motion before the board to have citizens come forth and speak on this particular issue during this time period.
Okay, got a motion? You have a second? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so?
Can I have a list?
You have a list and we'll go by that list.
Okay. The first person is Amina Ramsey. The first person is Amina Ramsey.
And as a reminder, Chair Corral, they will have.
Three minutes.
Three minutes for public comments.
Yes, I need for you to state your name and address.
Amina Ramsey, five fifteen Brook Hollow Drive. Good morning Board, Chair members, thank you for your time this morning. I am a resident of Brook Hollow, I stay at the very end. I'm speaking on behalf of several members who unfortunately are unable to speak because they are at work, they work full-time. Two of those are my mother, she's an elementary school teacher in Fulton County, and my sister who works at Emory. I myself work full-time as well, I'm a graduate of family law and I'm waiting Georgia bar results now, so I do work full-time. The problem was when Mr. Leon brought the petition, he said it was a survey. And he said, well, he'll get the results to us. We got, never got the results and so when we met, he said, oh, that wasn't a survey, that was a petition. So that to me means it was done in bad faith. There have, when the police officer from McDonough came about the speedometer that the Noltons place at the bottom of the hill on Brook Hollow where you naturally accelerate, they said that the average speed of the neighborhood was twenty-six miles an hour. So I'm not sure where the thirty-seven came from because that's what the police officer told us at the meeting. And what many of the residents are frustrated with is that the main person is Mr. Leon Nolton. I want speed bumps, I'm tired of people speeding and no one has ever gotten hurt, they've been here for over twenty years. There was no other alternative. A better alternative, in my opinion, and many of the other residents, is why not just create sidewalks? Speed bumps, they do damage to your car, they bring down the property value. Brook Hollow is a beautiful neighborhood, we moved there in twenty twenty. We don't have an HOA and I don't understand why there was not another alternative given. And also, people who work full-time, there are no like children in the neighborhood, there's no little children, most of them have grown up. And for us at the back of the neighborhood, we would have to go over twelve speed bumps one way to get to my house, full-time, Monday through Friday. We are going over twenty-four speed bumps a day. That's not good. Also, there's only one interest in Brook Hollow. I myself, I did have an ambulance call on me because I had asthma attack and I didn't know I had asthma. So, and that was a week before I sat for the bar exam. So I can't imagine one way in, one way out, and them having to cross all these speed bumps to get to me. There's, that is so concerning for me because what if it took them longer to get there and I couldn't get the help I needed? And also other residents too. So we vehemently oppose the speed bumps, the sidewalks, there should be other alternatives as well. And people need to just be considerate of other people. There's no one been harmed, no one has been hit and the speed is only twenty-six miles an hour. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Ramsey, is she?
That's my mom, she's teaching elementary school, so she's not here.
Next is Sanchez Share and Kishana Share is last.
Good morning, how you doing? I'm just touching back, good morning. I'm just touching on what she said. The petition wasn't fair at all. He went back and did a second petition to try to persuade people that we need speed bumps. Thirteen speed bumps, you're coming in there twice a day, that's twenty-six, very excessive. And we tried to go to them as a community to see can you compromise with the people in the back going over twenty-six speed bumps? And it seemed like it's more of a personal, personal issue with this. We've been living there, eight oh four Stone Glen Court, we've been living there at least fourteen years, we never had no problems. It's a safe community, no crime, no murder, no, no, no type of incidents have never happened. And I just don't see the reason for us to have these excessive speed bumps. I think we need to spend our money in a better situation instead of just putting on speed bumps.
I'm also a resident of, and a homeowner of Brook Hollow subdivision. My name is Kishana Share at eight oh four Stone Glen Court as well. I just, a lot of the things that I mentioned, I don't want to repeat. But I will say that the integrity of the data that was collected for the speed bumps was jeopardized because the person who was collecting the data is for the speed bumps. You have to have a neutral party or people of opposing parties even collecting the data. As far as the data that was collected for the radar speed trailer, there was a person from DOT that stated that the data did not warrant speed bumps. They said there was maybe one or two outliers, but there was not any data to warrant speed bumps. The homeowners never physically saw the documents stating that, stating the people who wanted or did not want speed bumps. So I don't even know if that's falsified information from the people who collected the data. The residents were never given the pros and cons of installing speed bumps and any possible alternatives before they even cast their votes. All homeowners were not even aware of the conversation pertaining to speed bumps, therefore they were not given an opportunity to even vote. So all the homeowners didn't even vote on this situation. And the blueprint that was presented today is a complete surprise to everyone in our neighborhood because we did not agree to this proposed plan of thirteen speed bumps all throughout the neighborhood. And who decided on this? The way this situation was handled was very, was by our self-appointed community leaders, which violated, violates all codes of conduct. And in conclusion, I do not agree with this plan to move forward with the installation of speed bumps. As all our neighbors were not aware and did not vote, we are not all in agreeance with the proposed plan in which we did not give our input. We did not help create this plan and we never approved it. And instead of, instead of our, instead of having an HOA, we have members of our neighborhood who are making unilateral biased decisions of our neighbors instead of embracing all residents' responses and comments. Brook Hollow is a community of people, not one or two individuals. And to comment, we do not have a lot of children in our neighborhood, it's particularly young children, we have mostly retired residents.
Are you a homeowner?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to say that I did attend a community meeting. And I guess at that meeting it had to be at least thirty-five to forty people there. They do not have a legal HOA, but the members there wanted to go forth and put forth the paperwork for speed bumps. But it does appear here in this group of people and the meeting that I did attend that the community does not have a sense of what they really want to happen. The group that we met with was very interested in speed bumps and wanted to find out the process. And I would like to put before this, this board, Madam Chair, to table this and let our team go back out to show them alternatives, maybe instead of thirteen, we may, maybe we need six or five or something of that nature, to give them an opportunity to determine how best to carve this up. Because I can understand if you're in the back of the community and have to go across thirteen different speed bumps or to get home one way and thirteen to come back the next day or something of that nature. So I would like to put forth this board to table this for today. Let's give them an opportunity to look at an alternative way of using these speed bumps. Maybe we can come down to six or seven in key areas, especially where the hills are, to see if we can work with the community for a better solution. That's what I'd like to propose as a motion today before this board.
I would just ask that if you move to table, that you table it to a date specific, to an upcoming meeting specific, to bring it back on the agenda.
So before we do that, Commissioner Thomas, you said it was some individual, some, is there anyone here that, that's from the neighborhood that wants to speak in favor of it? Please come forward because I would like to hear the comments for those that like to speak in favor of it.
Someone left their phone up here first of all.
Okay.
All right, my name is Leon Nolton, all right? First of all, I did it according to Henry County rules. We have discussed this for several years. I've been a resident at six hundred, I'm sorry, six hundred Brook Green Place for twenty-two years. Ms. Thomas came to my home when we had the meeting. Everything was done according to Henry County rules. Nothing was underhanded, none of that. We don't have a homeowner association. We all are neighbors, we came together, we have to pay the light entrance to keep our lights on in our subdivision. It's in my name. Now, I don't like when people come and say certain things is not true. First of all, it's only eleven speed breaker. It would only be nine as David Sim, Simmons came out and showed us. Nine of them, it's on the main street, two of them is on Forest Glen. So I don't know where all these different numbers coming from. And as far as me underhanding and doing this and stuff, that's not so. I did everything according to Henry County rules. And for people to attack my characters, first of all, I don't get paid. I was asked, we had community meetings for several years, over and over, we put out notice. I personally walked to every individual house, placed flyers when we was having meeting. Helped the meeting at my house several times. So for anyone to come up and say they weren't notified, that is untrue. And I just wanted to clear the record. I had signed up with Ms. Stephanie, but I took my name off due to the fact they said this was a resolution because we met the requirement to have the speed breakers installed in all the neighborhood. I didn't want them. But with everything going along and as far as David can speak, as far as the statistics, where the Henry County police officer came out, they set those machines up, everything was done by the book. And as far as the speed limit, he can speak on it because he had the survey. So one nothing done, underhanded. And I just wanted to let everyone know because first of all, I'm personally being attacked, my name has been called out and said that I underhand the stuff. That's not the way I work. I don't get paid, I do several things in the community, I do it on my own. I opened up my home, Ms. Vivian and Officer Smith, and I can't think of the other officers who was there. David came to my home, he showed them the layout, eleven speed bumps. Nine on the main street, two on Forest Glen, which we have another neighbor here that live on Forest Glen because people are flying up and down. I understand about emergency unit, but they explained to us though on the speed breaker. Four inches high, it comes up, level out. If you go in a decent speed, you will not tear up your car, it's not humps. So that's all I wanted to say. And like I said, if you want, as far as I'm concerned, I did everything accordingly. There are rules that Henry County have, if you want speed breakers removed.
Your time is up, thank you. Sir, you've already spoken, you cannot come back. Yeah.
Could we please have David clarify nine, eleven, thirteen, help me with that David, please.
Yes ma'am, basically what's shown on the, on the plat or on the, the attachment on Brook Hollow itself, there's nine total. So if you live in the very southernmost cul-de-sac, you will cross nine on your way out to Kellytown Road. We typically place them around five, six hundred feet apart. And we just sketched it up based on that and also tried to verify we didn't put them in like a blind spot. We want you to be able to see it before you get there. But that's typically the minimum. I've seen in the past, we've done them further apart. But since I've been doing it the last two or three years, we've typically been somewhere in that four to eight hundred feet range and normally a sweet spot of five, six hundred feet.
So based in your expert opinion, this is the best alternative, there's no other? Is that what you were saying?
That's, that's basically what we started out with and I think I went out to their house in late February or early March, I forget when. But, but this map is very similar to what I took out and shared with the people that were there. And, so, and I'll say, you know, a hundred and eighteen, we verified and counted sixty-two yeses, it's around fifty-three, fifty-four percent. There were seventy or seventy-one yeses, but we threw eight or nine of them out because maybe they were missing a signature or as a renter or something like that. So I think he covered conservatively, he got comments from maybe about seventy percent of the neighborhood.
So what I'm hearing from you, and I'm just reiterating this so that the community can understand, that you've given them the best alternative, there is no other real alternative we need to look at, because this is it.
Yeah, unless the board tells me to do less speed ups. I mean, but this is what I started out with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That would be my question is, would less speed humps be better? But I'd like to give Commissioner Clemens the opportunity to speak as well.
First of all, I want to say to the board that I, you know, whenever there's a discrepancy in the community, I think we need to let the community work it out before we jump in and we don't live there. So I want to appreciate Commissioner Thomas for wanting to table this, let them get themselves together. But David, there are other alternatives that I know that we presented before, instead of speed humps to reduce speed. If the issue is speeding, there are other things that you can put in the neighborhood besides speed humps. We've used different methods before with the raised bumps in the road, we've used, you know, different things.
That's, that's kind of what these are, they're raised.
So they're not the big speed humps?
Correct.
They're from me to the front of y'all's desk from beginning to end.
Okay, but I think if the other constituents, the other residents can see what it is and how, with the pros and the cons, or how does it affect cars? I think the education and the information needs to be given to the residents so that they can make the right decisions. And then also, if they're looking at reducing speed, just make sure that we're giving them other alternatives because.
And I'll say, in the county ordinance, the only thing we have for speed calming are the speed tables. We don't, and another thing, just the manual on uniform traffic control devices also tells you, don't use stop signs to control traffic because they'll just ignore it if they feel like it's not a justified sign. And so you kind of entice potentially a hazardous condition. It seems like it would work, but often they are, and unwarranted stop signs often ignored. So just in case, that was the thought.
Okay, so if you could just let the residents know where we placed these new ones at before so that they can go visit those communities to see what they are, instead of thinking it's the old school, big humps in the middle of the street.
Sure. And I'll say, we've got some on Sims Drive, probably the closest place I can think of to here. Doesn't mean it is the closest, I'm going off the top of my head. And it is off of one thirty-eight, just up one fifty-five and out west on one thirty-eight and two right. It runs between Old Conyers Road and, and one thirty-eight. And we do have some there, that was a road is twenty-five miles an hour is the only reason we could put them there. Because we won't put them on a road posted over twenty-five miles an hour.
David, what's the name of the ones that are not raised, but it's like, they're reflectors and then they just make noise when you go across them?
Rumble strips.
That's what I'm talking about, rumble strips are different from speed humps.
The only thing about those in the neighborhood, they may keep people up at night.
They slow down the speed and they don't destroy the cars.
Yes ma'am, all I'm just saying is the noise is the problem with those.
Okay, so Commissioner Thomas, you want, you made a motion, you want to look at doing it the first meeting in June to give your time to meet with?
Well.
Or do you want to?
What I want to say, Madam Chair, is that I think David has clarified that there's really no other alternative for us to bring it back and that's what I was trying to bring forth.
Okay.
Was there a better alternative? He's saying to me, I've looked at this and this is the best alternative. And I, when he's done that, I don't want to put him in a position where he's giving us something else and it's not the best alternative. The other thing is too, as he read the numbers, he stated, he has a number of people who actually signed the petition who do want this to take place and the process was followed correctly. I also do know that a community meeting was held, an extensive community meeting was held. I told them they should have prepared my lunch because we stayed there so long having different conversations about their community. And based upon that, I do want to put forth to this board that we go ahead and approve this for the safety of this community. It's a beautiful community, it needs safety in it, it needs speed bumps in it, speed tables as stated. The process has been followed correctly and I'm going to move for approval.
Okay, I, 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 I'm sorry.
A motion is currently, that has not been seconded, are you withdrawing your motion and making a new motion?
Are you withdrawing your motion and making a new motion?
I do want to withdraw my earlier motion.
Okay.
Because after hearing David, and he is our expert here, and I, I'm going to support what he has placed before us. I want to move for a motion to approve the proposal set forth by, um, our department.
Okay, so I do have a question. Um. David, is, is it a possibility, um, that you can do less tables? Or, or would it, would it?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it's, it's certainly possible. I even, when, in the ordinance, we say eleven plus or minus. So, as far as I'm concerned, I can go out and do ten if we, if, if the eleventh is in a spot that it just won't work. So.
Okay, alright.
I mean, so, um, we can do less, but this is typically what our layout would be.
Okay, that's what your layout would be. Okay, well, Commissioner Thomas has a motion on the floor to move forward with your plan. Commissioner Holmes has seconded. Any further discussion? Yes?
I would like to know the, um, the, uh, community leader that got the petition, how does he feel about less? Because we don't live out there, so I don't know what's going on. I mean, do you need to have less, do you need to have more?
Mr., Mr. Leon, would you come up? Because the, the petition was signed by fifty-one percent, the, the.
It's seventy percent? He said seventy percent.
Uh, sir, I will have you removed if you're not quiet, you, you cannot speak.
I have no problem with less. I just base it upon the county doing what they do. That's all. I don't have a problem either way, it's just that. The county did everything that they supposed to do. So, in terms of, just like she said, David them come out, they do the survey. I'm just a resident and unfortunate, no, not unfortunate, fortunate, I was the one that they asked me to do it. I just did it. I found out the information and I brought it to everybody and presented it to y'all the same way. That's all. So, less, I have no problem with it, it's just that, you know. And my feeling is, I follow procedure and that is a procedure. If people get unhappy after, if it's done, the same process, you have to go back, you can have them removed. If, if everyone agreed to it, the same process. I just have been working on this for over a year. And it ain't nothing that I'm just, you know, but less is, I don't have no problem.
Okay, thank you.
So, David, um, you did say that you just put them in there that way, but that you could spread them out further?
We could and, uh, um, what I could do was potentially see if, um, either we can get back together or they can provide me with ones they feel like they may not need if they want to knock one or two or three off or something. And quite frankly, we're paying for this out of our budget, so less is not exactly heartburn for DOT, so.
So, um, so, so David, I, I think it would be best if that determination is made by you. Um, uh, because we, we are putting them in.
Okay.
And, and so, um.
I will, um, come up with a revised map and just get back with them on trimming some off. And we'll see how that goes.
So, how do you want to proceed?
You know, that's fine with me, I just don't want to put him in a compromising situation. Where he's going against his codes and regulations. Because I don't want us to be, put ourselves in a position where we didn't follow the law and somebody get hurt and say they should have been this group apart and we didn't because we want to make people happy. I want David's expertise to lead the way. And if David's expertise say they have to be this number of feet apart, I'm going to follow that. But I'm not going to ask you to compromise that. Because I don't know the codes, I don't know the regulations on that. So, um, I'm going to say, I have to follow David's expertise on where they should be placed. That's what I have to follow. I don't know, this should be uphill, downhill, around, I don't know that. But I do know, if we don't follow your expertise and something does happen, then we are going to be held liable. So, I'm going to follow his expertise.
Okay. No, ma'am, no more speaking. Uh, you got a motion and a second. There's no other discussion from the board? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, uh, public hearing regarding FY twenty twenty-three proposed budget. David Smith, our Financial Services Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, Board Members in the Henry County Community. This will be the first public hearing of what will be two public hearings before adoption of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. My hope is to cover the following items, to discuss the budget, to provide a fund overview, to really talk about the general fund budget and our recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and recommendations from the board members that we met with, had opportunity to meet with. Key items in this summary. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three general fund proposed budget is two hundred and sixteen million, nine hundred seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This is up from our fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget of one hundred and eighty-nine million, six hundred forty-four, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. That's a fourteen point four percent increase, twenty-seven point three million dollars. We're going to use fund balance this year. Fund balance will be utilized to cover the eight and a half percent pay raise that we, this board approved back in February. It will also include the proposed additional two percent increase for fiscal year two, twenty-three. The most important item here, this budget is based on our current millage rate of twelve point seven three three. It continues to prioritize funding for ten new police officers, ten new firefighters and paramedics. This funding increases to the library to restore Saturday hours for them as well as the addition of a certified outreach librarian. This is board priority, our actions continue to have investments in competitive compensation because we want to maintain the ongoing objectives of the board, maintaining our employee benefits at no cost to the employee and our ongoing service levels. Let's talk about the increase. This increase of twenty-seven point three million is due largely to the county's tax digest growth. That tax digest growth is estimated at thirteen point eight percent, but we conservatively budget at four to four and a half percent. We show continued strength in year-over-year tax collections. We're appropriating fund balance to cover that eight and a half percent pay increase. A total of fifty-three point two percent or one hundred and fifteen point three million dollars of this budget is dedicated to public safety. It includes their salaries, benefits and additional resources to support their ongoing service levels. We had a budget development cycle, similar to the years when I first got here, where we had a timing of key input and drivers. In December, we began preliminary forecasts. We also talked to the board about their priorities and our county manager. In January, which is the tax digest valuation date, we analyzed our department objectives and we aligned those funds to the objectives for possible mid-year amendment. We did not do a mid-year amendment this year. February through March is when we talk to our tax assessor. We hold budget workshops with the departments to come up with what their requested needs are. In April, that tax digest is finalized. And then we also finalize our meetings with the county manager and our chair and the board. We're targeting hearings for final adoption on May, the second meeting in May. I wanted to provide a fund overview, just so we understand which funds we're talking about. Our general fund is for our daily operations of the county. We have a special revenue fund, that's where we hold our awards and grants. That's also where we have our cares funding and our ARPA funding. Our capital projects fund is comprised of our current year anticipated SPOLOX revenues, capital project revenues and associated projects. We won't be discussing the capital projects fund in this particular hearing. Our debt service fund is where our obligations are due, but our debt service is primarily obligated to our SPOLOX obligation. Here are our assumptions, and we only appropriate based upon our revenues that we have coming in. We don't do it the other way around. We're estimating a local tax increase generating approximately five million dollars, that's four percent. We anticipate sales taxes to increase six percent because we continue to show strength in tax collections year-over-year. Six percent of our fund, of fund balance will be used to invest in competitive compensation for our employees. What do our expenditure assumptions look like? Under human resources, cola longevity, we're covering insurance of about six point six million dollars, a pension increase of one million dollars. In public works, we have a countywide pavement management, intersection improvements and sidewalk saw cutting, two and a half million dollars. Public safety is primarily the additional officers and addition of fire safety personnel. This slide is what many department heads are concerned about. What's included, what's not included? So, let's talk about what's included. Technology services, we're adding system analysts, business analysts and web security analysts. In facilities maintenance, we're adding a building maintenance tech. Sentence enforcement, probation officers and court clerks. In senior services, drivers, program aides, home health aides and mills on wheels aides. Police, we've talked about. Fire, we've talked about. We're adding an EMA specialist. For E nine one one, which is in our special revenue fund, I want to talk about that we're adding fifteen dispatchers and operations supervisor and records and quality assurance. That total is about six and a half million dollars. We're providing additional funds for the Board of Ethics to bring their total budget to two hundred thousand dollars. Currently, we're conducting a vendor disparity study in purchasing, that's two hundred and ninety-three thousand. We're adding overtime for admin and jail staff for the sheriff's office of four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We've talked about the library, restoring Saturday hours, which our director of library resources has been trying to accomplish for three years. We also have to transfer out to our NSP fund, one point one million dollars to fulfill our county commitment of NSP operating expenses. This is difficult to see, but on this slide, it talks to what the overall budget is. We're starting at two hundred and three million dollars. We're adding ten point six million dollars for fund balance as well as an additional two and a half million to bring the total budget to two sixteen, nine oh seven, one fifty-eight. We're recommending that as our overall budget. We're projecting property tax revenue, we're adding safer grand employees expenses to the general fund this year and the administrative budget for the Board of Ethics are key assumptions included in this budget. We received numerous requests, and as you can see, the requests definitely outweigh what we can recommend or what we are recommending. The request by group looks like this. Public safety made up thirty-nine percent of the requested increase, followed by public works at twenty percent. Culture and recreation, seven percent. And so, we came up with the best recommendation possible that would address everyone's needs. Again, this slide is difficult to see, but you should have it in your packet. Our budget recommendation for the general fund being the two hundred and six million dollars. The intent is to have a public hearing, second public hearing and final budget adoption on the seventeenth. And in July and August is when we come back for our millage rate setting, the tax hearings. In meeting with the commissioners, the commissioners recommended that we increase their training and travel budget by ten thousand dollars so that it would be equivalent amongst all commissioners. This budget does reflect a ten thousand dollar increase for the chair and two thousand dollar increase for each district commissioner. The financial impact of this change is forty thousand dollars. We also intend this year to set aside in fund balance an amount for future, uh, land and building asset purchases. The, the commissioners also recommended that we do reduce the Board of Ethics budget, but we did include that amount. Prepare, Deanna, is there any questions you may have?
Well, this is a public hearing. Um, I'd like to ask the county clerk if we have anyone that pre-registered to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, and David, you said the next public hearing, uh, will be May seventeen?
May seventeenth, yes, ma'am.
Six thirty at our, um, evening board meeting?
Yes, ma'am. We've also posted the budget at the Superior Court Clerk, I believe, so that the public can see it. We have it posted on the website and they can also pick up a copy of the budget here at the admin building.
Could you go back to the slide that had the different positions? I see technology facilities. Did, did our court system, did our courts get any positions?
They made several requests, but no, they did not. We have several vacancies in the courts, but they did not.
Uh, do you have a list of those vacancies that, that are in the courts?
I can provide that to you after speaking with, uh, Mr. Cooper, our human resources director. I can get that to you.
Okay. I mean, because as we increase our public safety, then of course, you know, that puts a workload on the courts as well. And we have to make sure that, um, they have positions as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Madam Chair, I think I have a copy of the vacancy report. It should be included in the package that you all have. If you don't mind, I can provide it to David and if you want to put it up on the overhead, we can at least, it's going to be hard to see, but at least it'll give you an idea.
Yeah, okay.
There are seventy-five pages, so place them down. And again, the writing is going to be small, but we'll make sure we provide a copy to the board. And again, it's going to be hard to read. Um, I will tell you, on the first page, you'll see that the requests, we have accountability court. We also, thank you, communications. Um, under the fourth column, you'll see the specific department. So, under judicial system, that'll show you the vacancies in that particular, um, area. So, as you scroll down, you'll notice under accountability court, there are some vacancies. Um, we'll keep going, under judicial, um, system, we have for the DA's office. We have a victim services, so it's about four or five under the DA. And then as we move forward, that's public works. And again, these are all vacancies. So, that's just to give you an idea that we do keep a running, um, roster of vacancies.
Okay, then, um, okay, so I would just, uh, so are these current vacancies?
Yes, ma'am.
As, as of today?
Well, depending on if we hired anyone yesterday or if they filled positions. So, there is a likelihood, um, that this report has either gone up or gone down just based on the number of people that may have resigned and or the positions that were already in the harbor to be filled.
Okay.
But we can, I'll make sure we give a as-of TODAY update, um, with the positions and specifically pull out the judicial component.
Okay. Okay, um. Uh, District Attorney, uh, Darius Spatella, if you would, please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when I looked at the, um, the list, it looked like it reflected that the district attorney's office has three vacancies. The la- last time we met with the budget team was probably in March. We're in May now. Um, by my count, we have one vacancy in the DA's office, and that's an attorney, um, on this budget. Um, so, we are filled other, um, other than that one position. Uh, but let me point out also that when we met with the. But let me point out also that when we met with the budget team and as well as with HR, the positions we requested were five. So it's not true that on that list just now, it's not four or five vacancies even on that list that was just presented. I counted three. Maybe I couldn't see it that far away. But by my count, it's one on this general fund budget, and it's one attorney. Now, the positions that we're asking for are five positions. All of those are filled. We're asking for three investigators, one paralegal, and one file clerk, which is essentially an admin position. And all of those positions were filled at the time we submitted our budget requests, as well as when we met with the budget team. Now, we may have had a vacancy at the time, but I explained to the team at that point that we were actively hiring, interviewing, and even had some prospects at that time. But the vacancies that we have right now, we're not asking for. So, on this budget, one attorney vacant, we're not asking for any attorneys. We need investigators, and specifically, those investigators are for investigating the most serious crimes that we face in our community, two of which are for homicide and gangs. I explained that in the paperwork we submitted in February. I explained that to HR. I explained that to the budget team. One of those investigator positions is for crimes against women and children, domestic violence, and aggravated child molestation and such. The paralegal position is also for homicide and gangs. We have experienced an uptick in crime in Henry County during the pandemic, and an uptick in violent crimes specifically. And I think that's well-known and well-documented. So absolutely, the police need their resources, no question about that. But every felony case that they make, we will have to prosecute. Your DA's office has to prosecute in court, and none of it matters if we can't secure convictions. And the reason investigative positions are so important is because when we get cases from the police, we pick those cases up where they left off. When they make an arrest, they may have found witnesses. Some of those witnesses, you may be shocked to know, in criminal cases are not necessarily wanting to come to court. So our investigators have to go out and find these people and subpoena them, and maybe even arrest them if we get material witness warrants from the court. So these are very important positions, specifically as it relates to these investigative positions. So the notion that we may need, I guess, 10 or 15 or 20 new police officers, and your DA's office doesn't need any additional resources from one year to the next is not consistent with the reality that we're all living in. And I have here with me my chief investigator, Russell Moore. Mr. Moore, if you could stand up, please. And so, we constantly beat this drum. And one frustration that I have, and you can hear it in my voice, is this. The DA's office, your DA's office, is an arm of your criminal justice system. We are public safety, period. I do not like the fact that we get lumped into courts because we just happen to work in the courthouse. What we do is an absolute public safety function, and I just want to make that distinction clear. I've been saying that for five years, and some of this predates your tender, Madam Chair. So I appreciate the questions, but that's where we are. I've communicated this. I always follow the budget process. When it changes, we follow it to the T. Paperwork in, we make every meeting, it's in on time. But I have to advocate for the people that I've been elected to serve and for my department. So I thank you for your time, but we need five positions, the most important of which are those three investigator, three positions. Thank you.
DA Patello, can you tell me how your caseload, what percentage has your caseload gone up?
I don't have those numbers right here specifically, but I can tell you, just generally speaking, when we did a cursory look at the homicides in 2021, which was last year, the numbers were up two to three times in terms of homicide and violent crimes as the previous three years combined. We're early in 2022 right now. Hopefully, those numbers are going to start to decrease. And I will point out that your DA's office has done a fantastic job, and I think that's evidenced by some of the news reports that you see in terms of the work product we have produced, despite the fact that we are a small staff compared to some of the other metro counties. And we are also very involved in the community, as many people know, in our schools and at various other organizational activities. So I understand, and I empathize with staff. We've had many conversations over the years, this past year, and I know that they have an entire county to run, and I don't envy their position that they're in, but I have to emphasize our need, and I just can't say that enough now. But right now, when we meet with them, we met with them in March, it's now May. We may have had a vacancy or two then, but we have since filled that, but nobody's looped back around to us to ask us, you know, have you filled any of these positions that may have been vacant at the time? And so, I just want to point that out just to make sure that the record is clear. But any position I asked for in this budget, we did not have a vacancy for at the time we met and submitted our documents. And I made that clear, and that's currently still the case.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
We give the DA all the resources he needs to do his job. So I wanted to say thank you again for coming up here and speaking to us, but I also have a question for David. David, you mentioned something about future, not current land purchases, but future land purchases. But you didn't talk in detail about future land purchases and why we need to purchase land in the future.
I did not, but I do believe we need to set aside something in fund balance for future land purchases. One example is DA Patello, he didn't bring this up, but he talked about the size of his staff. So an example would be, he's looking for a place to locate that staff right now. And so, we're out looking for real estate, or so that we can provide rental space for him. Another item that's out there is we need to do something with our E-911 facility, which, as you well know, is in a Butler Building. It needs to be more in a reinforced building. So where do we put that? Where are we going to put something like that if we don't have the current? May I finish answering, responding to your question?
No, I just want to ask a question. I thought we were acquiring a building where we were putting E-911 downstairs.
So that's what I mean about future land purchases.
That's current land purchase. We already approved that.
We're doing that now, but there are other things that we need to consider to do.
Commissioner Thomas?
I do want to say that I am one of the ones that supports having a line item for future land purchases, because one of the things that we are running out of land for is parks and recreations. I have constituents, and I have to go so far to get to a park in my area, and go, I don't have any land over in this area. And the land is going up so high, it's almost impossible to get some land for our parks and recreation areas. So I do support us putting aside some type of funding, so when something comes available, they can start reacting to it. Instead of coming back to the meeting, telling something's coming available, get back and get them approved to go forward, then get a letter of intent out of something that, then we've lost out. So I do support us having something in place to say that this administration has located such and such and so land, would like to go and put a letter of intent on it, and don't lose that in the process. We can't be behind the ball when something is available to us. I do support that, David, and thank you for putting that in the budget.
Yes ma'am.
Absolutely, and I echo Commissioner Thomas's, you know, because, you know, this county is huge, and there's not enough senior centers around. As we continue to grow and build, then we've got to make sure that we are able to provide the quality of life and the public safety that is needed to keep our community safe. And so, I'm in agreement with that. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, David, I want to address the Board of Commissioners' travel and training. Back in January, I think you put an exhibit up there that addressed all the spendings for the Board of Commissioners. Now, majority of the Commissioners were pretty much in line with their spendings, which we were halfway through the year. So I think if any Commissioner needs additional travel and training, they need to come to the Board mid-year adjustment and justify why they may need that. So, that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, go ahead.
I would come in on that as well. I think that it would be in alignment to go ahead and adjust our budget forward. Training and expenses have gone up for us as well. The flying has gone up, the tickets have gone up, rooms have gone up, food has gone up. We are a part of this community as well, and we have to serve this community. And I am one that believes in investing in your Commissioner to make sure that they are at these training seminars, that we can bring back the best and ready to perform for our constituents. So I don't think, again, we have time, again, come back and forth about a few dollars. We need to go ahead and up the budget. The Chair has increased the $10,000 budget. Let's just increase each Commissioner $10,000, and we all will be the same across the board. We know what the budget are. We're grown. We can manage those budgets. We don't need to have to go back and forth. I need $1,000 for this and $2,000 for that. It just doesn't make sense. If we can manage the budget for the whole county, truly, we can manage our individual budgets. So that's my suggestion on that.
Commissioner Wilson?
So we could maintain where we at, and any additional spending, I think each Commissioner could put it on their personal charge card, then they could bring it to the Board for justification for reimbursement. That's all.
Okay. We're not voting. This is just a poll, David. Okay. All right, thank you, David.
Madam Chair, I'd like to clarify a couple of points first before I go. So DA Patello so passionately talked about his needs of the five investigators. And I wanted to say, we absolutely, positively must also provide parity for our public defender when we are considering adding investigators. We also owe it to our public to add public defenders for those cases that he's prosecuting. But the second piece is that as we do that, we have to consider, because of the vacancies, we budget for those vacancies. And so, there is opportunity, if there are other departments that wish to give up their vacant positions, to provide that in the current budget. Thank you.
Hold on. Commissioner Clemens?
David, I have a question in reference to the milage rate and the increase. And have you looked at how the increase will impact the milage rate?
We're maintaining the same milage rate.
So you will not be recommending an increase?
I'm not recommending an increase to our milage rate this year. No ma'am.
Thank you.
They are suggesting that the assessments are inflated. And that's what's driving up the, you know, the taxes that they have to pay on their properties. So that's, you know, can you talk more about that, David, that suggestion?
So, additional revenue increases, if we're talking about property taxes specifically, do come from new building as well as the inflationary value of homes. And we have seen a tremendous increase in the value of homes as people are trying to buy it. Homes that are typically were $200,000 are now being assessed at maybe a $300,000 rate. And that's why I mentioned the 13.8% increase. But we really don't see that, because we exist on nine months of our fund balance, and we don't see that coming in until the October, November, December timeframe.
But David, I would like to see if you could look into, just because we get more money, that we don't increase spending, but if we're getting more money, give it back to the citizens and maybe lower their tax rates in the home instead of just taking in more money and spending more money. So I really would like to see what that looks like for our citizens and our homeowners, because even though the property values are going up, it doesn't necessarily mean that their income is going up.
The pay increase, we have to have higher assessments so we can collect the revenue to cover the pay increase.
David, find out how much we can give back to the homeowners, if any.
Yes ma'am.
I think that poses a problem, but you can look into it, David.
I will look into it, but I would not recommend a milage rate rollback.
I wouldn't either. All right, we're going to move on to the next topic. Melbourne Brown of Stockbridge Appeal, the denial of a variance request for property located at 120 St. Marks Drive, District 5.
Madam Chair, you can skip one of the planning and zoning items, the Impact Fee Schedule Update.
Which one is that?
It's under Impact Fee Schedule Update. It's a public hearing. It was right above it.
Okay. Okay, so Impact Fee Update. Is that Tucson?
And Chair Harold, you also skipped the public safety agenda item. It's the resolution approving the purchase of two command vehicles.
My stuff in my book, right there. Okay. That's my doing. Okay. All right, so let's go to public safety. Resolution approving the purchase of two command vehicles from 10-8 for the Henry County Public Safety Cluster in the amount of $2.7 million utilizing ARPA funds for the purchase. Chief Burnett.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, Board members. Today, standing in front of you as a representative of the Henry County Public Safety Cluster lead, I want to make it clear that this is not a request for the Fire Department specifically, but a request that will serve the entire Public Safety Division of Henry County. What you have in front of you is a resolution approving the purchase of two command vehicles from 10-8 for the Henry County Public Safety Cluster in the amount of $2,730,000 utilizing ARPA funds for the purchase. An operational need has been identified by the entire Public Safety Cluster for the purchase of two command vehicles due to the current apparatus being out of date and can no longer be updated. 10-8 is the vendor that we use for this type of equipment. The local vendor for the command vehicles has provided the attached quote for two enforcer mobile command vehicles. The attached quote was made under the NPP GOV agreement for a total cost of the $2,730,000. ARPA funds have been identified for the purchase of both command vehicles. And with that, what I want to speak on just a little bit is how we got to where these command vehicles are currently and what these two command vehicles will do. I'll put a picture of what they're going to look like. So currently, the two command vehicles that we have in place, the county had three of them up until a little while ago. The Police Department's command vehicle that they were utilizing was actually out of date and actually caught on fire, and then now that vehicle is no longer in service. The two other command vehicles that we currently utilize, one for the Fire and EMA Division along with the E-911 command vehicle. Those vehicles were purchased after September the 11th, 2001. Under the declaration that came out of that, it was determined that there was a need for these types of vehicles in public safety. Vehicles that we currently have are 2005 model vehicles. The vehicles are built basically on an RV-style frame. They have the slide outs. They look just like a recreational mobile home-type vehicle. So the vehicles were new to the era in the early 2000s, so therefore, they didn't have these types of vehicles back then. So we did the best that we could back then, and we utilized the RV-style vehicles in 2005. Both of those vehicles are, since have become outdated. They weren't built specifically to be able to be upgraded long-term, so we're having several issues with those vehicles. There are several parts that are failing on those vehicles. We can't update them and so forth. So now you have in front of you a recommendation to replace both of those vehicles. One specifically will serve as a public safety-style command vehicle, which will serve the EMA Division, the Fire Department, along with the Police Department. The second vehicle will be designed specifically and set up for the 911 center. This can be used as a backup 911 location. It can also be utilized to help offset the agreements that our current E-911 facility has with other agencies across the state, should their 911 facility go down. This vehicle can be transported across the state, or personnel from other areas and jurisdictions can come to Henry County and use this 911 vehicle as their 911 center. So that's the purpose of the two vehicles. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Chief, there seems to be immediate need for public safety. My question is, are the other vehicles out there that need to be replaced as well?
We have several needs identified throughout all areas of public safety, yes sir. I know that I have specific needs, and know that the Police Department has specific needs, and know the 911 has specific needs. So there are definitely needs all across each department. So, there are definitely needs all across, uh, each department. Yes, sir.
So, this is the, the primary need at this time is these command vehicles?
There, there are, again, multiple needs across all departments. Uh, we, we have significant needs across all departments. And, and I'll just be honest with you when I say that. Uh, one of the things that I did when I took my position was sat down with Chief Farron and we started to identify what some of those needs were when it relates to public safety vehicles. We were able to address, uh, a big chunk of that need last year with the six engines that we were able to purchase along with the six ambulances. Uh, when we sat down with him, these vehicles were identified as an ongoing need. So, we do have several ongoing needs, yes, sir, throughout the county. Uh, and as far as a priority goes, um, you know, we sit down with Jody, who develops our fleet replacement plan. We identify what the needs are and then let them prioritize those needs.
So, I guess with, uh, fleet, with our current frontline equipment, PD and Fire, are there any, any equipment out there that needs to be replaced today?
If, if you're asking if we have any out of service equipment, uh, or older style equipment, yes, sir. We, we do have some of those as well.
So, I guess a question for our finance, uh, where did, where did David go? Oh, there he is. So, we paying for ARPA fun, paying for this out of ARPA funds. Can we hear from fleet and maybe come up with some additional vehicles to pay for out of ARPA funds as well?
Commissioner Wilson, there is opportunity to pay for other vehicles out of ARPA funds. Uh, but primarily, this is for public safety. But you can also use ARPA funds for general government services. And so, I believe that's the way that we're doing this.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to get fleet to give us a list of vehicles in our frontline to come back and see if we could use ARPA funds replacing fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, squads. What do we, or ladder, what do we need? So, and, and go from there.
Uh, Joey.
Yes, ma'am.
What are your need, what are the needs right now with regards to public safety and vehicles far as the, the rotation of, um, fleet? You keep up, you keep a running record of what needs to be replaced and when it needs to be replaced.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have police vehicles that need to be replaced? Do we have, um, you know, fire engines or whatever that need to be replaced immediately?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, and good morning Chair, Board, and Citizens. Uh, I'm Jody, Fleet Director. Uh, currently, uh, as I sat down with the Chief, uh, two or three days ago, uh, we have identified, uh, I, it's, it's an incredibly large list of things that are from, uh, two thousand, two thousand fourteen. Um, we have thing, uh, we have equipment in the fleet that is twenty-two years old that we are still currently, uh, working on. Uh, the vehicles in question here, uh, definitely are, you know, simple RVs that are made out of one by one wood and thin aluminum. Uh, they were designed for four or five people to consistently maybe walk in at a park. And we're putting ten, fifteen, twenty-five people in it. Um, we use a drill to open the slides because the hydraulics are no longer available. They're obsolete. Um, and our list is, uh, uh, been, we've been supplied, uh, we've, we have supplied the list, uh, you know, through finance, and we are definitely working on many options, including, uh, leasing, uh, these purchases. Um, we're recommending, uh, several, probably some ladder trucks, uh, some fire engines that still need to replace, uh, several about, was it four?
Four, five.
I believe it was four fire engines. And that way, our stand, our, uh, reserve units are, uh, finally up to date. Some of those are sixteen.
Twenty years old.
Twenty years old. Sixteen to twenty years old that we are looking at. Uh, we are still maintaining them. Uh, there's, they're somewhat safe, but many parts are obsolete, uh, at this moment. So, um, and through our, uh, recommendation that we're gonna probably make soon about leasing some options that the Board had asked for, uh, we are, we have an incredible number of the fleet older than ten years. The average is fourteen years old in the fleet currently.
Chair, I would like to add too that, um, th, these, these two types of vehicles are, are not vehicles that, that you're gonna see riding up and down the road every day. These are not gonna be first out response vehicles, um, that respond to calls on a daily basis. These are two specialty type vehicles that are very unique, uh, to specific call types. Fingers crossed, the hope is that we never have to utilize either one of these two vehicles. Because if, if either one of these two vehicles have to be utilized, then that means there's a significant emergency taking place, um, that's gonna span, uh, you know, possibly up to several days. So, what the, the hope is, is we never have to use these two types of vehicles. But in the event that we do, uh, in the event that we do have to use these, uh, these types of vehicles, you know, then, then that, there's the need.
Uh, can you go back a slide? Okay. I, I thought you had another slide with another type vehicle.
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Thomas?
My question is, and it may be directed to you or to our County Manager. I know we had an extensive conversation at one time. Uh, we wanted to look at leasing some of these types of vehicles for our Service Department for the simple reason of, like, the two thousand and five that you mentioned, which is outdated. You can't find parts. It can't be replaced. So, basically, we have that vehicle that we can't do anything with. And I remember, uh, there was an extensive conversation about when we start getting specialty vehicles, things of this nature, that we will look at leasing options. So, when that lease is over, we can go back and get updated vehicles and not find ourselves in this position again. I have an outdated equipment that we now have to determine what to do with the two thousand and five. Can we recoup, recoup any money from that? Uh, is it salvageable? Who wants it if you can't find parts for it? And I would hate for us to put two million dollars in these two command vehicles. And then in five years, we have the same problem. What to do with this one? We can't find parts. It's outdated. And you've just stated, we will not use this vehicle on a regular basis. Uh, would it be better? And this is a question. Command center is what you're calling this. Would it be better as some of us are building our, uh, fire stations and police stations, uh, throughout the county to designate a room, to designate an area, even if it's underground, atop ground, as a command center that can be around the entire county and, and use as needed? Than to have a vehicle that may be outdated in a few years? Because it could very well be, as we're building our fire stations, we can build command centers that will be located throughout the county. And whenever you need to activate one in a particular area, you have one there to activate and to use and can be updated much easier than spending this type of money on two vehicles that may be outdated within a few years. I want us to be able to, be able to equip you guys on an ongoing basis. So, County Manager, if we can go back to that discussion, I remember you bringing forth some numbers. You are David, but if we went into leasing programs, we can update our vehicles on a certain number of cycles, save a certain amount of money, and never really have to worry about them being outdated. And I think, um, Chair Harrell, that discussion really need to happen again so we can make sure that we can keep our safety, Public Safety Department, in current vehicles and moving forward.
Yes, ma'am. A, a couple of things, though.
So, Commissioner, I'm gonna speak to the lease, and then I'm gonna let Chief Burnett speak to the vehicle versus an emergency operations center. You are correct. This Board has already authorized us, and we have already started with the lease purchase, I believe, on our ladder trucks, if I remember correctly. It was ladder or engine trucks. So, we are already doing that. One of the things that Jody just referenced is we're also in conversations with, um, Enterprise Rental because they've reached out to the county regarding rental, um, or at least leasing of vehicles on some of our administrative side. So, we are already moving forward with the lease purchase or the leasing option. And this Board did authorize us to do that maybe about a year and a half ago on two, um, pieces of apparatus for the Fire Department. So, we are already doing that.
So, would this be a good candidate to look at? This is my question. I don't want us to have another vehicle in five years. And the Fire Chief saying, we can't find parts. It's outdated. We can't use it. And we may not have used it but one time in that five-year cycle. We really need to consider that.
So, I'll, I'll speak specifically to the, the question in reference to the, the outdated equipment and the, the fire apparatus. So, I, I do believe that there, uh, is a benefit of leasing our ladder trucks and especially our fire engines. A ladder truck, uh, is a, is a specialty style vehicle as well. Uh, that technology does, does change on every so often. You can't take parts off of a ladder truck or you can't update specifically a ladder truck. You can't update specifically a fire engine. I can't take the, the pump out of the fire engine and put a, you know, a, a better pump in it. I can't put sensors around a fire truck. Uh, I can't upgrade a fire truck specifically when you're talking about, you know, the new technology that's coming onto the market. This truck specifically, though, functions on the inside. As a, as a command style vehicle, what you're, what you're building with this type of vehicle specifically, um, is a, is a big box that has TVs on the inside of it. It has computers built on the inside of it. It has cameras built on the inside of it. Those are things specifically that can be upgraded over time. I can take an old computer out and, and put a new computer in, and the vehicle still be able to function and still be able to keep up with the new technology that's going on because it serves as the, as the transport of all the equipment that we need on the scene. I can't do that specifically with the ladder truck. I can't take, you know, a, a, the ladder off of one truck that we have and put it on another truck, uh, and, and upgrade that technology. I, I can't do that. With this truck specifically, though, uh, again, it's, it's housing a big box as a specialty style truck and apparatus. I can take the computer equipment, the electronic equipment out of it and put new stuff in, in five years when the computers do change. That's the upgrades that this truck will be able to do. We can still go with the lease purchase, you know, option or a lease option turn in, a- absolutely. But those are the difference when we're talking about leasing trucks on the technology upgrade side of things versus, you know, this truck specifically and where that technology upgrade, uh, falls within this particular apparatus.
So, what's the difference in the com, in a, in a mobile command and being stationary?
A, a mobile command obviously allows you to be directly on the scene with the emergency. Uh, it allows for, uh, a, a real-time view of the emergency, a, a real-time, uh, information coming to you. Although you can, you can run emergencies from off sites, it, it complicates the situation a little bit depending on what style of emergency you have. Uh, it also provides, uh, sometimes a place to get out of the weather, whether it be hot, cold, raining, snow, and so forth. Um, and it allows a place for multiple people to sit outside or inside an environment that allows them not to be affected by other people, you know, communicating, doesn't, uh, affect them with, uh, different radio traffic and all the stuff that's going on. It allows, you know, multiple people, uh, who are those decision makers to be in one place and one time, uh, and, and again, be able to focus on making those decisions versus, you know, standing out, uh, in the weather and having to actually try to function on the scene.
So, this command center will be utilized by PD, EM, uh, EMS. Could I have the Chief and EMS Director to come up, please?
The, yes, ma'am. So, one vehicle will be utilized by the, the Fire Department, the EMA Department, uh, and the Police Department specifically. And then the, the second vehicle will be specifically utilized for the specialty of the nine one one center.
Chief, can, can, can you tell us the importance of, of the need of this?
Oh, absolutely. Um, we have to have a vehicle when we do have these major incidents, like our barricaded gunman, hostage situations, when negotiators need to come out, they need a place to go. My leaders need a place to go when they can talk and plan and get the intel of what's coming in from the officers that are actually out on the scene, whether it's a fire or a tornado or, you know, a gunman. Um, that's the one command vehicle. Then the nine one one vehicle, that, that's huge. Our nine one one center is in a metal building. To me, that is insane. This other vehicle can operate as a nine one one center and still run the county. Um, when I, when I got with my team, I said, "Look, my vehicle in PD is caught on fire and it's gone." I know Fire Department's vehicle is super old, and I know nine one one's vehicle was super old. I said, "Look, we need to, we need to do something to get these things upgraded, and we need to get them working so they're operable." Well, they went out and checked, and they're not fixable. And they can't be upgraded because of the way they were designed and built back in the early two thousands. One of the greatest, the biggest selling points to me was exactly, uh, questions the Board were asking. Am I gonna need another vehicle in five years? When the team came, this is how they sold it to me. All this technology, whether it's the radios, the computers, the cameras, everything in it, can be upgraded. The current vehicles can't be. I can't go in and just pull out a radio in the nine one one and replace it. This vehicle, I can. They're telling me that this vehicle's gonna last, this is the command vehicle and the nine one one vehicle for the next twenty years. So, yes, I think it's a very worthwhile investment to invest in this vehicle, especially if I can update it. Computers are only gonna last three to five years before they're outdated. But this is the kind of vehicle that could be constantly upgraded, which is, which is huge, and that's what we need. Uh, you know, I, I almost equate it to when I came before the Board, asking for a Bearcat. You know, unfortunately, I had to have three people die and two officers get shot before we got it. It's kinda like an insurance policy. Like he said, "I hope we never need it. I hope I never need the Bearcat again." Yes, the Bearcat's been out again. However, though, I hope we don't need it. I hope a tornado doesn't come and wipe out the nine one one center. I hope we don't need this vehicle, but if we do. But there's also other things we can do with them. Take, uh, you know, the race where we need a command vehicle out there and a nine one one mobile away from the scene. We, they can be handling just that incident where the dispatchers at the nine one one center can keep doing their job without the, all that other traffic coming in. So, just to sum up, I think this is a good investment. Why? Because it can be constantly updated. Fire Department vehicles obviously last a very long time, and that's the vendor we're using. Look, you see how old they are. I know that gets tough on Jody and, and the Fire Chief's team trying to keep them going. But this looks like very, very good quality to me, and it's something that can be updated. And it is a specialty vehicle. You know, the team's gone down the ten eight, uh, PD people and fire people and actually sat down with the designers and looked at all this to design it exactly what we need to fit our needs. So, that's why I think this would be a worthwhile pu, uh, purchase for us.
Commissioner Thomas?
I hear them, and I'm still going back to whether or not we need to lease something like this. But we have to realize, he's talking about on-site command. And on-site command is very important. But they got drones to do that now, even the militaries. You can sit a drone on site to get everything you want to feed back to your command stations. And I would like for you all to look at the other options. If you have local units at a command station, you're sending drones out to get your on-site information. It's coming back to you in real time. It's there. And I just don't see how this vehicle, as it is on a purchase, is advantageous. If we wanna lease it, okay. Then when it's outdated, turn it back in. Constantly lease it, okay. Then we don't have to worry about the parts and replacing it and that type of thing. But what you're talking about that you need, there are drones that do it now and bring it back to you in real time, in color, close up, and can see your eyes if they want to and never know they're there. Uh, but I do would think that we need to have management, give us some numbers for leasing options, other options in investing in it and it becoming in, uh, another box that now needs to be a bigger box, that need different connections, and the upgrade of that box, even though you can upgrade it, it's another fifty thousand, another hundred thousand dollars just to upgrade it. We don't have to do that. Now, there was a time and place, we didn't have those options. I want you to have what you need to operate, but I want you to be in a, in a place where it's easy to redo, renew, update consistently. That's what I'm after.
So, Commissioner Thomas, if I may, and I think one of the things that we evaluated in terms of, of what we're gonna do from a capital aspect, is that we're utilizing ARPA funds. And so, from a financial standpoint, if the funding is available where we can go ahead and make this purchase, why not make the purchase? If we go through a lease purchase option, then that's more dependency on our general fund. That means over the year, we're gonna have to continue paying, paying this debt down. Now, you mentioned drones being an option. We have a drone system or we have a drone. But understand, we have to get permission to let that drone go up. If the weather conditions aren't, um, favorable, we can't. If the weather conditions aren't favorable, we can't send a drone up. And so in an emergency, we can't determine if, hey, is the weather gonna work for us to be able to utilize it? Right now, we have a need. And I think one of the things that we've talked about at the board level is making sure that our teams have the resources that they need to be able to do their job. I agree. We may not ever have to use it, but when we have to use it, it needs to be available. We've had incidences over the last six or seven months where we've had to have a dive team to go in to recover individuals from lakes. We can't have someone who's stationed back on Industrial Boulevard giving us details about what's going on. And so there is definitely a need for it. But if the board wants us to look at a lease-purchase option, we can. But I think at that point, we're taking the ARPA funding out of it. And one of the things that you all said to us is that you wanted your ARPA funding to focus on general county government. And so that's why we're bringing you all items that are eligible that would be general county government. And that was the whole point in utilizing the ARPA funding and to go in ahead, moving forward with it. The other thing is that this vehicle won't be available tomorrow or next month. And so timing is everything. And so we want to go ahead, get approval from the board so that we can move forward with it and have it available should the need arise.
Kevin.
Thank you, Chair. Both chiefs here made a lot of great points in reference to the need here. I can tell you that the mobile command vehicle will be utilized by all departments in the county. It's gonna be a single decision point for on-scene operations. We are federally and state mandated to operate utilizing the incident command system and the national incident management system. That dictates that all on-scene operations are managed by the on-scene command. When we're talking about our emergency operations center right down the street, that's where we support the decisions and logistical needs that are created by on-scene command. Right? So the real data, the real decisions, the real needs are identified on scene by the units that are in that command post. This is where unified commands establish, where all departments come together. And this is where other departments are trained to report to when we have mutual aid responses. So an apparatus of this nature is going to be on scene in Henry County. If we have a large-scale event, it might be another county's name on the side of it, but it's gonna show up. So I recommend we get it, we train on it, we utilize it. We have the staff to do so, and we have the need. Thank you.
And this is an opportunity to utilize funds that will not come out of our budget.
I wanted to just say that what the drones can't do is provide shelter, logistics, space, or planning compartments. And if nothing more than us being on 75 and near 75 and to go out there and to see accidents that's happening with the tractor trailers and the trucks and having four, five police cars out there because they're all over the place and you work in the cars. I think it's a desperate need and it's an investment that this county has to make just because where we're located. Yes, the community will need it, but I think we'll use it more from a state perspective with everything that's happening on the interstates as well as the crime, the tick of crime that's happening. But I think that it's necessarily that we make this purchase because we don't have to use our general funds to make it right now. So I think it's a good use of the funds. And keep in mind that the command center is a shelter, a space, is for logistics, is for conferences, is for if there's an emergency that comes up that the officers, the public safety is not standing outside, but there's a space for them to go to handle the business. And I think you can also do, you can put investigators and you have cameras and where you can look at, like all of the technology can happen on site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner West.
So I agree, we need to purchase these vehicles. Back in my career, I wish we had something like this because I've spent many hours in the rain, in the cold, especially when the tornado hit the Atlanta Motor Speedway. Like I spent 16 hours at the airport. So now, question for you, chief, these chassis appears chassis, is that correct?
Yes.
So the goods, what we should do to sell this, we could have the vehicles that we currently have and bring them out front and let the board see what we're operating and let them see what we're operating out of down, okay? So, because they're pretty old. Need to let them drive them too because they drive like a water balloon. They don't, they're not really that safe to drive, so. But I agree, we need to move forward with the purchase and go back to fleet, see if we can, what are the vehicles we need to replace immediately and add that to the ARPA funds if we can.
Can I get a motion? Got a motion? Got a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Planning and zoning impact fee update. The Board of Commissioners will conduct the first two public hearings for the purpose of adopting an updated impact fee schedule countywide.
Good morning, members here.
Good morning, chair and commissioners. So yes, I'm excited that we're to this point to have the first public hearing. The second public hearing will be May 17th. And also, we hope to have a vote, maybe the first meeting in June, which will be June 7th meeting. I have Bill Ross here today with Ross and Associates. He is the consultant on the project. And Mr. Josh Santuro with the Council of Quality Growth, he will speak later as part of the public hearing. And a lot of this information is the same information. There are some considerations at the end I want to go through. We did receive a letter from the Home Builders Association and the Council of Quality Growth, and I'll address some of those concerns, if you will, as part of my presentation. And so again, we're looking at comparison of adopted fees from cities and from the counties. Again, we're at $10,000 max. And I think it's safe to say that we're not gonna ask for $10,000. But of course, no one wants an increase, but inevitably, I think an increase is needed. As you look at these, the fees here, the lower right-hand corner does outline what percentage of the fee is fee as a percentage of the project cost. So you're looking at the full $10,000 or 3% cost for that project. And as you go through the next exercise, you look at for single-family dwellings, it's only 1.74% at the $5,600 median rate. So, you know, the recommendation from staff was anywhere between $5,000 to $6,000. So essentially, we just took the $1,661 we currently charge minus the $10,000 and that number, the difference was cut in half and just added back to the $1,661. So it's not exactly $5,600, but that was kind of the science behind what we did to get to the median rate. And across the board, the impact fee, it will affect everyone. So the increase will not only affect the housing market, but also warehousing during office space. And the reason we use housing is it's really easier. It's more linear than the rest of the uses. And this impact fee right here is based off inflation, which is $3,200 over 18-year period. This is the preferred notion, if I'm safe to say, by the home builders and whatnot. But again, you see the percentage, as a fee as a percentage of the project cost, at this rate, you're looking at less than 1% on a $326,000 house. And again, we really need a fee. If it's gonna go up a dollar, $10,000, whatever it may be, we just need to settle on a fee or a number so we can assess to the developers. And we talk about phasing in the increase. It just shows a two- to three- to four-year phase-in program for the 100%, the median. And we've added the slide for the inflation. And so you'll see over the two-year period, if you do the $3,200, you're roughly increasing it roughly about $1,000. We're a little less than $1,000 a year up to 2024. These are the fee considerations that we spoke about in the past. The fee considerations you see on the screen actually came out of a conversation that we had with the Home Builders Association. And as, like I said, I'm gonna go through these one by one. Impact fees imposed at the time of building permit, that was the original conversation that we had with the Home Builders Association. Now, they're asking, and this is some of the Council of Quality Growth's thoughts as well from their clients, but vesting clause for any project that has filed a zoning application or a land disturbance permit application prior to adoption. So the only issue I have with that is that we've had, we've got rezonings that happened back in 2020 that have not yet even broken ground. So that is a concern. And so if you did get a rezoning filed and zoned, if you don't make it there, you're asking us to vest you at land disturbance once you submit for your land disturbance. We think that the building permit is the most objective. It doesn't allow for, you know, looking at two to three years before you even basically impose a fee. So it takes you roughly anywhere from six to eight months to do a rezoning. And on top of that, once you do start turning dirt, it takes you about 12 to 18 months to even get to the point to actually sell lots. So again, the consideration we offer is six-month grace for building permits approved prior to the new fee. Now, the request is a one-year grace period for residential and commercial developers that did not account for increased fees. So my concern with that is we've been having this conversation for over a year. So you'd hope at some point, planning would have started by the developers. Building permits approved prior to new impact fee, they pay the current fee. Of course, I think we all can agree on that. If you've already, prior to adoption, if you've already paid the fee, we're not gonna change the fee on you. In addition, we already offer that the fee not be paid until the time you get your certificate of occupancy. So you can completely build a structure, build a home, whatever it may be, and then pay the fee at the end prior to us giving you the C.O. Adopt phase process, I think we can agree on that as well. The phase process over a three-year period, a 25% increase per year. Either way it goes, I think we all can agree on that. And that's all I have for this morning.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak in favor, please come forward. Have the timer set for 10 minutes, a collective time of 10 minutes, if you would like to speak in favor. If there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition, you have the same 10 minutes collectively. Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, good morning. My name is Joseph Santoro. I'm here on behalf of the Council of Quality Growth. We are a nonprofit trade association representing over 300 developers and companies here on the metro Atlanta region that comprised of architects, engineers, attorneys, all with a vested interest in quality growth and development, both in the metro Atlanta region and here in Henry County. And I would say, you know, I do want to appreciate working with staff and them allowing us the opportunity to speak with them and voice some of our concerns as well as our recommendations. And today, I just quickly want to go through some of those. And, you know, we do understand here at the council, Henry County's aspiration to update its impact fees since it was last changed over 18 years ago. And it recognizes that these impact fees need to cover the growth-related capital costs that maintain adequate levels of service and transportation, parks, fire, and police facilities throughout the county. And we do appreciate the opportunity to engage today as well as in the interim between now and the next public hearing as well as with staff. And I know Toussaint's been very receptive, so I just wanted to personally and publicly thank him on the county updating fees. And really, you know, I just hope that the Board of Commissioners can, you know, respectfully request some of our recommendations today on the fee increase as well as the implementation and the vesting clause option. So Toussaint did lay out those recommendations that we proposed. But really quickly, just want to reiterate on the fee increase side. I think we all know about the housing affordability as well as the attainability crisis here in the metro region and the nation as a whole, as well as the increased demand for housing. And local regulations such as impact fees, among other regulations, all contribute to the increased cost of construction, which I do want to emphasize is ultimately passed on to the home buyer. So I think that's something that's very important to consider as you're looking at the fee increase. Now, we do know, you know, the county's looking to increase this. We would recommend kind of looking at that 18-year inflation number. We think that's, you know, that's indicated in the methodology report and kind of not move beyond that maximum of 100% increase of the existing fee to be kind of consistent with some of our neighboring counties. I know we have, you know, Toussaint brought up the chart of Forsyth County, Cherokee County, a lot of the other counties that are, have impact fees, so just consider that. And then on the implementation and investing of existing permits, you know, as Toussaint said, he's in favor of the recommended three-year phase-in approach or 25%, however the Board of Commissioners deems appropriate. So and then, you know, we did recommend a one-year grace period. And I know Toussaint said they're still kind of working on some of the cases back in 2020. And I think it's important to consider that those cases currently working in 2020 did not account for an impact fee increase, which may make it difficult for that project to continue. So I just want to just be in mind of that as you're looking at a grace period as well as a vesting clause. And, you know, as he laid out, we would like to have that one year. I think that gives, you know, I know they've been working on this for quite a while now, but I think some of the smaller builders, builders that are building four or five homes a year are not gonna be up to speed on this process. And all of a sudden, they have this upgraded, new increased fee. So just keep that in consideration. You know, we are here as a resource and continue to be here as a resource for the Board of Commissioners and staff and look forward to continuing the dialogue, and that's all I have today.
I'm sorry, I may have missed a recommendation that you made with regards to the increase or no increase?
Yeah, so I know the, you know, we're kind of looking at, you know, if the Board of Commissioners does move forward with an increase, that we would recommend with the 18-year inflation number of about $3,200.
Thank you.
Really quickly, one last thing. I'm not sure if anybody here is from the Home Builders Association. They are at a conference today. They will be here for the second meeting.
Yeah, I believe all of us received email letters from them stating that they were at a conference, but they would be at the next public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to come and speak?
Okay, any questions or comments from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Clements.
Toussaint, I was glad that Council for Quality Growth is here today, but I really want to make sure that, I want to just say that they work on behalf of the developers, but they have always worked in collaboration with our government and with our staff. And I think a collaboration is what we need to make sure that we continue. So when you present what you're requesting, I would like to see what they're requesting side by side because I know that there were still some things that were not implemented that Council for Quality Growth wanted to see implemented. And I want to see those side by side. So continue to work with them so that they can give a 100%, this is, you know, what we think will continue to help Henry County thrive. Because that's the main thing. What we don't want to do is to become dormant and lose those dollars to other communities because we've implemented something that's outside of what the Council of Quality Growth would recommend. And do you know what he was talking about with the percentage that they recommended? Okay, yeah. Okay, just want to make sure you have it.
Yeah, it's this last slide here. I'm sorry, that one there.
So which one is what they're recommending?
This slide right here, it's the $3,200 based off inflation.
Yeah, and I think- Yeah, and I think they were recommending 13, or were they recommending 3,200?
3,200.
And what did you recommend?
So, our recommendation originally was $5,000 to $6,000, right?
Yeah. That's a big difference.
And I think that we need to start somewhere. I think that we do have to keep up with ri-, um, the rise in inflation cost, uh, because we still have to pay for public safety and, 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 and all the services that we provide.
Right.
You know, it's either that or stop building.
Right.
You know, so, it's gotta be a compromise.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think Chair 3,200 takes, it doubles us.
Right.
So, 3,200 would double us for this year, and then we can increase from that. But the first year shouldn't be the six, cuz that's more than double.
And I agree.
You know? So, if we could start where we're there, uh, we'll just, we, we need to talk more with them about.
Commissioner Anglin.
Question, Tucson.
Okay. Uh, question is, I know we got a two- to five-year, uh, proposed increase to increase these, two to five years. Is there a way so we don't have to do this after that two, three, four, five-year period again, for us to just do a straight percentage increase moving forward? So, therefore, our hands are then kind of removed from it moving forward?
As, as the inflation increases, I think that it should...
Whatever that rate is, whether it's 3%, 4% yearly, that we go ahead and just say, hey, this is what we're gonna be doing moving forward. That way, we're not having to reconvene on this in another two, three, four years.
All right, so to that point, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bill Ross to come and speak to that.
Thank you. I am Bill Ross with Ross Associates, and the answer is yes. Under the current studies that have been done, that project a maximum of $10,000 per house, as long as you have a fee schedule less than $10,000, you don't have to go back and re-study the whole thing all over again. On the other hand, you may want to, because, um, as the county continues to grow, you may start to say, well, wait a minute, now we're down to only a 10-year future. Maybe we need to get it back out to 15 or 20 years looking ahead. That is, you're free to do that. But the simple answer to your question is, this study is good until you hit $10,000.
So, I guess, uh, if you can do that, would you have to put that as part of the resolution?
My only comment is we haven't done this since, what is it, 2000, what was that year? Last time they, right, last increase we had?
18 years.
18 years. And that would resolve that problem of that happening again.
Commissioner Anglin, this would be the first increase.
The, the 18 years ago was the initial setup of the impact fee ordinance. So, this would be the first increase that the county, um, has proposed to the board.
Correct. And remember, we're adding transportation to it now, so the original 1661 did not include transportation.
Commissioner Wilson.
You said collecting these fees at CO, when they get the CO on the residential side? Is that when you're gonna collect the fees, that when they get their CO?
They have that option, yes, sir.
So, the problem that I have with that is we have a downturn in the economy, and we have inventory like we did several years back. And then the banks own the homes. Are we gonna require the banks to pay that when they get their CO?
Well, whoever owns the home at the time...
Well, the banks will wind up with us if we have a recession.
Right, so to release the CO, all fees need to be paid.
So, they're required to pay that as well?
Uh huh, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Based on a percentage, right?
Okay.
Okay, so as assessments increase, the fee increases, right?
No.
Explain.
So, Commissioner Holmes, the fees aren't based on a percentage. The fees for a single-family home, it's just a flat rate. For commercial and industrial, it's based on the International Building Code and the square footage, it's a lot of formulas that go into it.
Yeah, okay. Square footage, got it.
Thank you. Next, we'll have, um, public hearing. Melbourne Brown of Stockbury, Georgia appeals the denial of a variance. Request for property located at 120 St. Mark's Drive. The property is in District 5. Kenta?
I'm afraid, bro.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, the item before you is property located at 120 St. Mark's Drive and is 1.21 plus or minus acres. The property is currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, and is within the Chapel Hill subdivision. Uh, this is the site plan for the property that was submitted by the applicant. Uh, the item before you is a request to appeal the denial of a variance request for relief from rear yard setback standards. Um, the original deck of the home encroached into the 40-foot rear yard setback and was permitted as it was not enclosed, and was permitted as it was not enclosed. Uh, upon enclosing the deck without permits, a structure then became non-conforming. Uh, upon seeking permits for an accessory structure and pool, the Henry County Building Plan Review Department, uh, requested a variance request to address the non-conformity issue. Um, the original variance request was to reduce the rear yard setback from 40 feet to 20, 20.4 feet, uh, and the zoning advisory board on January 20th, 2022 denied the request. Uh, staff does recommend, um, the denial be overturned and grant approval for the request to reduce the rear yard setback from 40 to 20.4 feet, uh, with those two conditions stipulations. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Uh, if there's anyone that's here to speak in favor of the project, please come forward. State your name.
Hi, um, Melbourne Brown, I'm the owner of the property, and that's my wife Sharon. Kenton already explained what the issue was, was in the setback. I didn't know that. Then, um, I enclosed the back. I didn't know I have to get a permit to enclose it because I wasn't building any, um, load bearing, anything, I just closed it up. So, if you look at the, um, the side where the chimney is, that back is my, um, what you call the, um, the deck that I enclosed. And I was one of the person to move into the subdivision in 2000, yeah, 2000. And this, this bottom part has been there since 2003. That's when I enclosed it, when I moved. And if you, that's my house and that's, oh, no. Which number? Yeah, that's the, um, that's the other side of it. This is the, um, view of it. And, um, okay. Yes, this is the, pretty much the downstairs. This is what it's been since, um, 2003, which I, um, finished. So, just wanna give you an idea what it looks like. This is the top part of it. So, um, I'm, my, um, uh, what I'm asking you to, I'm gonna go with the recommendation. This is, the reason why we are here, I'm here because of the fact that it's not, because of my dorm, because of the fact that the builder built it in a setback. If it was not in a setback, I would be talking with the building, um, people about the permit which I didn't get. Because that was my ignorance. I didn't even know that I have to get a bill for me to close my, my deck itself. So, I just asked you, um, because I know it's gonna be impacts, couldn't have... So... I've been told what the impact's gonna be if you refuse it. I'm gonna have to destroy the back of my house. So, I'm just asking you to just, um, approve. Okay, that's all I can say. That's all, and I have an instant.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Okay, um, good afternoon. Uh, I just wanted to say, I'm Sharon Brown and my husband Melbourne. Um, as far as the variance goes, we're just asking you all to approve, um, because the issue was is it was built, um, and I guess at some point was approved when the builder built it. And, um, Melbourne did not know, um, what he needed to do, but he's found out, and we just wanna apologize. And we also wanna thank you for letting us come here for an appeal today. Thank you. And we have neighbors here to speak on our behalf.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and other Commissioners. My name is Deborah McClanahan. I live in the Chapel Hill, uh, area. We came to support our neighbor and ask you to approve the variance. Uh, that, uh, setback has been in place since 2013. It is no safety violation. It does not present a hazard to any of the neighbors. It does not impede on any of the other neighbors' property. We have 59 homes in Chapel Hill Estates. All of us have had an opportunity to visit the Brown's family's home, and we have enjoyed it. Melbourne has served as our, uh, Chapel Hill president for four years. All of our board meetings, all of our Chapel Hill Estates, um, homeowners' meetings were held at his home. And so, we have had an opportunity to visit the area that he has added to his home and truly enjoy it. Uh, the outside appearance of his home is outstanding. We receive, at our home, we receive about 20 to 30 visitors per month. And every visitor that visit our home always compliment that house that sits on the corner because it is immaculate both inside and outside. So, today, we, I stand in favor and ask the Commissioners to support this variance that has been in place for over 2013. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, good morning. Uh, my name is Dexter McClanahan. And again, I echo everything that my wife has said. Uh, the Melbourne, uh, Melbourne and his family's home is a, a beautiful home. And I ask that, uh, the variance be approved as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Arthur Warren. I also live in the Chapel Hill resident. And, uh, I would like to ask to, for y'all to approve the variance of what he have done, and he have a nice home over there. And for him to, for it to be, uh, destroyed or whatever had to be done, is, it doesn't make sense. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tonya Thomas. I also live in Chapel Hill Estates. And I also ask that the variance be approved. It's a beautiful home. He does a lot for the community. Does a lot, volunteer work to help our, our subdivision. And so, I'd like that be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, this is your district.
Well, first of all, I wanna say, um, it is a beautiful home. I ride past, um, the home on a continuous basis. Um, it does add to that community and the community overall. Um, I, I just wanna apologize that you have to go, that you had to go through the denial. And, um, I am going to move to approve the variance today.
Okay, so got... Okay, I'm sorry.
He called for opposition, so just...
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here in opposition? Okay, all right. Uh, Commissioner Holmes has made a, a motion. Uh, Commissioner Thomas has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Well, Stacy, almost last but not least, public hearing and ordinance by Henry County to amend the Unified Land Development Code of Henry County Code of Ordinances.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This item was brought to the attention of Planning and Zoning from the, the District One Commissioner. And so, the, the issue that has been brought before us basically is that we're missing a, a middle ground. So, the ULDC allows for lots to simply be divided, but it's, it's limited in that you can only divide a piece of property into five lots in five years without having to go through a major subdivision sort of process. So, we're missing that middle between dividing a lot into five lots and going through a major subdivision sort of scenario. So, Planning and Zoning has considered this. We have come up with a recommendation. And so, what we're proposing is that the ULDC be amended to add what we're terming minor subdivisions, but that is also gonna be very much limited. So, um, we're looking at just RA pieces of property that are large lots and RA pieces of property that are just in the rural residential areas of the county as delineated on our future land use map, which is exhibited in your exhibit books, but also on the, the overhead. So, these sage green areas of the county, um, this, these are the areas that we're talking about with large RA tracks that could be split into more than five lots, um, but that wouldn't necessarily be in the public interest to meet a, a major subdivision standard. So, for example, these might be on unimproved roads. These, um, may not have access to public water, public sewer. But the, the property owners, instead of being able to divide their property into reasonable-sized tracks, are left with having to wait for a major developer to approach them, a developer with large pockets who would be able to extend the water lines or the sewer lines of the road or what have you. Um, and these are areas of the county that we wish to remain rural. So, the way that the ordinance would be written, it would say that these would be minimum three-acre lots that would be divided. These would be a minimum 200-foot lot width. Flag lots would be allowed because some of these large properties are rather deep. And if it's an unimproved road, that's okay. Um, if, as a matter of fact, a minor subdivision wouldn't even allow for, um, internal streets or for infrastructure that would have to be extended. Um, so, so this, this is our proposal. Um, I'd be happy to answer the questions.
This is a public hearing. Uh, if there's anyone wishing, uh, to come forward and speak in favor of the change, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the change, please come forward. Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson.
Once the final plan's been recorded for a large tract to be divided, once it's recorded, the property cannot be divided again, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We wrote that in there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd like to call for a motion. Okay, got a motion? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public comments, um, were taken earlier during the, um, of the hearing that we had, and we need to get approval of the minutes. Okay. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Our upcoming meeting, May 17th at 6:30, is a regular BLC. Our upcoming meeting, May seventeenth at six-thirty, is a regular BLC meeting. Our upcoming meeting, May seventeenth at six-thirty, is a regular BLC meeting. Uh, there will be the second public hearing and adoption for the 2023 proposed budget. Uh, there will be the second public hearing and adoption for the 2023 proposed budget. June seventh, 2022 at nine AM is a regular scheduled BLC meeting. June seventh, 2022 at nine AM is a regular scheduled BLC meeting. Um, I need to, a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation. Um, I need to, a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation.
No, typical. No, typical.
Okay, motion, got a second? Okay, motion, got a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor? All right, we're gonna take a break and go into executive session. All right, we're gonna take a break and go into executive session. Be back shortly. Be back shortly.
Yeah.
You gotta you gotta have a science period.
But you say uh.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah.
Google's standing right.
I saw when you walked in, I thought to myself, you look for me.
What are you saying?
Can I show you that 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 side of the room?
Oh, okay.
Um where where do you want to.
I've heard all that's what was made in this.
Yeah, this um this this is that company here.
We got.
I always should wear these. Look at your eyes. Also, that's just good. This is. Yeah, um uh you. Kind of like that. It was first. Yeah, I've heard this. You're talking about. Yes, yeah. I'm gonna go on to probably help some of the person. I like that they made some nice. Yeah, I just. And you. But that's what it that are going. We discussed people. So we give it uh maybe uh two. We have people in the. Well, I I would have uh make are you doing Robin saying? But it's it's in this bill. Uh you know. You uh here. People not. You were strong. How long was? All this time. Uh it's a. Um we consider it to be fairly big and all of it be pretty much. And 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 that's. It's hard. Number three. So. Well, one I think it's. Yeah. Yeah. So. We try to. But we have. Um probably. This this this. Yeah, we we wish right forward. Yeah.
Let me know when they ready. Oh, we came until they start the uh video back. So let call for motion first to reconvene. Okay, got a motion in second. All in favor? What I need to do, Stephanie? Okay, so approval of the affidavit for the resolution pertaining to executive session. Call for motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Uh any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh meeting adjourned.